I will call this meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education regular meeting for February 24th, 2015 to order. Present is Mrs. Eileen Lou McCormick, Mr. Mark Patton, Ms. Donna Carnell, Mrs. Jessica Gerber, myself, Philip Dwyer, Mr. John Confortito, Mr. Paul Fattabene, Mrs. Jennifer Maxon Cunelli. We got an email recently that because of business commitment, Mr. Lou Ellen, who expected to come, is not able to be here tonight. If I could ask you to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and to stay standing for a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
A member of our family has lost a member of her family. In Karen Parks, we thank you for still being here, but we extend our condolences to you and your family for the loss of your father. And we hope that over the next several days, you take some time off to spend time with family. If we can bow our heads for a moment of silence. We get to start with student reports. And Mr. Schuster, your name is first? Do you wish to go first or defer?
I'll go first.
Okay.
So as usual at Fairfield Ward, we have a lot going on. We're currently at the halfway point of our third marking period, which also means that course selection for next year's school year for ninth through 11th graders is coming to a close. They're meeting with their guidance counselors and speaking with their teachers to figure out what courses best fit their needs. Tomorrow, more than 350 of our students will be taking the AMC Math Exam. It's a voluntary exam where students test their skills against other math students throughout the country. The Library and Media Center in our school is sponsoring a guest presenter, Paul Valponi, who is the author of Rikers High and the Final Four. He'll be addressing students in our reading classes via Skype, and he's going to be talking about his experiences and his work as a writer. One of our civics classes is traveling to Hartford next week to visit the state capitol to meet with our local legislators, which they're very excited about. It's going to be a very nice experience for them. Our sports teams, as always, are winning and doing very well. The Ward Girls Basketball Team is playing the FCX semifinals game tonight versus Greenwich at Fairfield-Ludlow. They're seeded fifth in the CAC tournament that will begin next week. Our wrestling team finished second in the CAC Class L Tournament. Ten of our wrestlers qualified for the CAC State Open Tournament to be held this weekend. Our Red Cross Club is sponsoring the annual blood drive, which takes place on March 11th. And March 1st is approaching, which means that many college application decisions will be released, which also means that senioritis will be spreading very rapidly throughout our school.
Thank you. Any questions for our representative from Ward? So Ms. Finity, you're up.
In sports, Ludlow has also had some great successes since the last time we met. Cheerleading won FCX this weekend and go into the state tournament undefeated this year. Boys Indoor Track had a runner make it to the state opens and qualify for New England's. A relay team, one individual runner, and one high jumper from the girls Indoor Track team also qualified for New England's. The relay team narrowly missed Nationals, but has a shot if one team drops out. The ski team just finished their season as well. The girls team ended with a seven and one record, and the boys with a 22 and four record. States are next Tuesday, and both teams are expected to come out strong. Clubs at Ludlow also continue to thrive. The Film Club is currently making informational videos about the available clubs for next year's freshmen. Their Marine Biology Club, in conjunction with the Marine Biology classes, plan to have four 20-gallon fish tanks fully running by the end of the year. The IC Club has its Glasses Drive as an ongoing project. And the Yaks Club has started a fundraiser for the Norma Freem Breast Care Center, where students pay $2 to match a teacher's baby picture to the teacher, and the person who matches the most baby pictures to the teacher gets a prize. Inside of the classroom, AP teachers have handed out information about the AP tests in May, and registration for the exam began yesterday. The price has increased to $95 per test, causing some grumbles among students, but most are planning to sit for the exam. As I reported last time, students found the noise from the construction disruptive, and while it continues to be so, it has gotten better since the workers finished taking down the stairs. Lastly, parents, students, and teachers alike have complained that the construction and snow pileup causes obscene amounts of traffic in the drop-off sections and end in the parking lot. With the added snow and the more forecasted to come, it is difficult for both parents, students, and teachers to safely navigate the parking lots, entrance routes, and walkways into school. In addition, students who walk to school have voiced that they feel unsafe while doing so. The snow and slippery conditions, combined with reckless drivers rushing to school or parents to get home, has made walking hazardous. Students who walk to school would like the roots and entrances near the school to be better plowed, cleared, and sanded in order to make their roots more safe.
Thank you very much. Any questions for our representative from Ludlow? I'm sure the staff will take your comments to -- oh, Ms. Carnell.
Thank you. Can we make it $5 for board members to match our baby pictures?
Maybe next year.
And $10 for Dr. Title.
And how much if we don't want to share them? Okay, you are welcome to stay around, or you are welcome, as usual, to take off if you have other items more scintillating than talking about roofs and bylaws. We're now at the section for public comments, and as you know, members of the public have an option. You may talk about an item now that is on our agenda, or you can wait until the item comes up for discussion at the appropriate time. Any member of the public wishing to make a statement to the board currently at this time? Please come forward and sign in mystery guest. State your name and address.
Mystery guest number one, just kidding. Trudy Darrell, Holland Hill parent and Fairfield resident. I am discussing the agenda item regarding the long-range facilities plan. I'm sure you're not surprised. I was very pleasantly -- well, no, that's the wrong word. I was pleased to see the maps included in the enclosures so that we could see how the spaces were being used. I'm here yet again to urge that Holland Hill be slated at the top for renovations because we are in a fairly, what I would characterize as desperate situation. I would like to address a few discrepancies, at least from my point of view, on the chart of the requested information. It seems to me when I look at the room deficiencies that that information is based on the current 2011-2015 plan, which does not take into account that Holland Hill has increased by two sections and is currently at 20 sections, so our deficiencies would be more. When I look at the maps that were provided, it appears that other schools -- because I do not want to pit one school against the other here, that is not my purpose. I'm merely here advocating for my own. But it appears that other schools have the ability to dedicate spaces to conference rooms, computer labs, large spaces for math and science specialists, language arts specialists. And we simply do not have that ability. We do not have that luxury. We do not have that space. So I'm here yet again, please, to urge you. Our numbers are increasing. We are over our bricks and mortar capacity. We are over our capacities with our portables. There is no place for people to go. And if we continue on the trend that we have been on for the past several years, there will continue to be nowhere for people to go. So again, I urge you, please, take that into consideration when you make your final decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public wish to come forward? Please state your name and address.
I'm Monique Sudokoff, and I live on Lockwood Road, and I wanted to talk about the food allergy policy. I want to thank the board again for taking this on and spending the time with it. It's been a very emotional, individual, and complex issue, and I really appreciate how responsive you've been to the community, so thank you. Regarding the policy, I've put my focus on Section 5, Prevention, and I'm really pleased with where you've netted out. Regarding the everyday snacks in the elementary school classroom, I think where you've netted out in terms of not allowing nuts and making sure that parents and the community are educated on how to do that is very reasonable and achievable. I don't think it's going to suit everyone's needs, and I think there are a minority of kids with allergies who will need additional accommodations, but I think the policy sets out for that, so I appreciate that. Regarding the part of the policy that talks about no food in school celebrations for elementary schools, I also think that that's the right decision. I think it will make things safer for our kids. And a number of parents have expressed to me their disappointment in how that will stop long-held traditions, and I understand that. But I think that as a parent who's had kids in elementary school with allergies, it will make my kids safer, and navigating the celebrations is extremely difficult. As much as we try, we've had close calls and mistakes, and I think that when you've got 10% to 15% of the kids who could get sick when you have a celebration, it's a reasonable sacrifice to ask. I understand it's a sacrifice, but I think it's a reasonable one. And some people have said to me that they do think that what we're doing now for school celebrations is working, and as a mom of kids with allergies, I would say again that it's not, that there are a lot of issues around it. So I think the policy that you've put together makes a lot of sense, and I really appreciate the time and support you in the policy, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? State your name. Come forward, state your name and address, please.
Good evening. Jason Lee, Sunny Ridge Avenue. I'm also a proud parent, like the bumper stickers always say, proud parent of a Holland Hill student. I'm a RTM representative, District 8, which is in the Holland Hill District. I just want to talk to you. I see the maps and stuff like that. I'm not a big believer in these maps and floor plans. All I'm asking is, if you haven't had a chance to go to Holland Hill on a tour, you need to. I was surprised, being a parent there, I don't get to see the backs and stuff. I'm surprised of the three separate -- I call them trailers. I don't care how you say it. They're separate from the school, where my kid has to put on her boots and jacket to go out there for music, and you have two 5th grade classrooms that aren't attached anywhere to a school. It's alarming to see that from a safety perspective personally. I think our district has grown. I think it's no surprise Fairfield has grown. But when you have teachers who need to call parents on a private matter, and they stand in the janitorial closet next to the hot water pipes in the dark closet, it says something about the school. And, you know, all kidding aside, First Selectment Tetros, that's where he went to school, not to age him out, I'm assuming during the '70s and stuff, that, kidding aside on the side, he's like, "Oh, things haven't changed since I was a kid." Well, that kind of comment is unfair for this next generation of students. You know, we can't go to school and say, "Oh, that hasn't changed since I was a kid." We don't see that now with high schools. Everything needs to be modernized for these kids, needs to be safer. We know the district is growing, and we have kids with different needs from all across the spectrum that need the proper attention, proper facilities to handle that. So I just ask, as much as I'd like to see Holland Hill first on the list, before you make any decisions, make sure you go take a tour, talk to the principals, or talk to anyone you know in that district, and compare it with the two, and see firsthand yourself what needs to be done. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to make a comment to the Board of Education at this time? If not, we'll move on to the first item of business, which is old business, approval of the bylaw amendment. I'll ask that the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the bylaw amendment to Article 6, per enclosure number one. Mr. Patton, do you wish to make that as a motion?
I will.
Is there a second? Mrs. Gerber, as the maker of the motion, you have the first floor.
I will start off by apologizing that I handout that I've given you at the table today in terms of, it's called Bylaw Change Timeline, was emailed out a couple of hours ago, but I had thought it was done this morning, and then it apparently didn't go through. This timeline, and there's copies in the back for anybody else who needs them, basically it gives an overview of what happened, starting about a year ago, when this particular board entered into its new term in November of 2013, and then takes it all the way through, basically, to last month. This bylaw to basically change our laws to amend bylaws to need a 2/3 majority --
Bless you.
-- stemmed from a desire to make sure we were in compliance with Robert's Rules of Order, which is another one of our bylaws, and that bylaw states that we operate by Robert's Rules of Order, yet we had another bylaw that stated to amend a bylaw, we had a simple majority, whereas Robert's Rules state you need a 2/3 majority, which is the other handout that says, number 68 just says Robert's Rules of Order. There's a bolded section that just gives you a brief bullet point, and this is also from one of the original Robert's Rules books that has, this paragraph has continued in pretty much the same fashion for the last almost 100 years, that states that, you know, to amend a constitution or a bylaw for an operational procedure for a committee, that it should be a substantial, if it's a substantial thing, it should have a 2/3 majority, meaning the majority of the members should want this change. It shouldn't be easy to change a bylaw or a constitution. And I will concede the mic with this final comment that board members in past meetings have basically stated, I believe it was Mr. Fattabene who even said that, you know, why are we bringing this forward now, and we should put this forth to a future board? And this timeline basically proves that this was brought forth in the spring, and the board basically decided that this amendment should wait until any amendment by all members throughout the course of the year that wanted to be proposed, were proposed and voted on, and this would be the last thing, so we wouldn't be changing the rules in the middle. So this is it. We've tried for several months, and it's now on the agenda for the hopefully final time, and that's about all I have to say.
Mrs. Gerber, as the secondor, do you wish to make anything comments? Any comments from the board? Mrs. Lou McCormick?
I would, I have two comments. The first being that we had deferred the vote last time because we did not have the full board present, and again, tonight, we do not have a full board present, so I would suggest that we should delay the vote until we have the full board present in respect to the fact of the importance of this issue.
Any other comments from board members? Is that a motion? I don't know. You didn't --
Yeah, that's a motion to delay. Sorry.
Okay. There's a motion made by Mrs. Lou McCormick to postpone this item to the next regular meeting. Is that your motion?
Correct.
Mr. Fattabene, is there a second for that motion? You seconded it. Okay. Any discussion on the motion to postpone? I'll make, go ahead, Ms. Carnell.
Do you want to go ahead?
No, no, I defer to members.
I agree that if it was postponed last time because not all members were here, I'm not sure why it shouldn't be postponed as a respect to the member that's missing.
This has been postponed twice. I think the board members are fully aware of the intent behind this motion. I think arguments have been made. Personally, I think it's time to move ahead. I think we all know, based on prior debate, where different board members stand, so I'm prepared to take action on this motion and will vote against the motion to postpone because with a year's time, I think this is now time to take action. Any other comments from board members?
I'll comment on that. I think that inherently indicates that one board member is more important than another board member. When you have one absence with one board member and then postpone, and another absent with another board member, and you don't postpone, I think that rationale is not, in my opinion, logical.
Ms. Carnell.
And in addition, if it's waited a year, I'm not sure waiting a few more weeks makes
Mr. Confortito.
Throughout this almost one-year process, it's always been the policy of this board to make sure that all members were present, which is probably why it's taken nearly a year to do. So that's been the practice of the board since last May, and I'm inclined to vote for the motion to postpone.
Other comments from board members? Based on four members making one statement, another member making a different statement, and three being silent, I'm going to assume that we may be heading to a tie vote as a possibility. It doesn't make sense to me personally to have it defeated on a tie vote, so while I would prefer to take action on this tonight, I will vote, I'll change my vote to say we'll postpone to another regular meeting. However, I would ask that the board members give strong consideration that if we get to another meeting and yet another different member is absent, at what point do we say we need to take action and move this agenda item off of our agenda? Because there have been many times where a single member has been absent, and we have still taken action. And so, yes, out of courtesy, we have deferred, but I will ask our board members that should the March meeting end up with one absent member, that we still proceed to a vote is would be my recommendation. Any other comments on the motion to postpone? Okay, all in favor of the motion to postpone? Please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Mr. Patton, it's unanimous. So eight-zero. Moved on to the March meeting. We have the first read of Policy 5516, Students with Healthcare Needs, Life-Threatening Allergies. I believe this is coming out of the Policy Committee, so Mrs. Maxon Cunelli, do you wish to make comments on it?
I brought with me my original five-and-a-half-page opening statement upon the presentation of this policy. I will not read the exact same statement again. I think at this point, the board and members of the public have the gist of it, in that we are very much embracing the spirit as well as the letter of the state statute and attempting to protect diagnosed as well as undiagnosed students with life-threatening allergies. And so the policy you have before you, the new text, because we now consider this new text is entirely in red, which obviously will, unless you choose to go back a few drafts to find where we have made the various changes, I don't think you necessarily need to do it. The vast majority of this has stayed the same with some minor tweaking. A lot of our changes in the Policy Committee involved making it consistent, because as we moved and edited and switched things around and added new language, as will invariably happen, there was duplications as well as inconsistencies. And so we think we've done a fairly good job of weeding those out. And of course, finally, where the majority of the changes were made were in the prevention section. There are actually a couple of new issues to bring to your attention, which is particularly on page seven, involving, capital letter D, foods in schools generally, in terms of trying to get the message out about where we hope to go as a district in terms of ensuring the safe school environment for students while in the classroom and in certain other areas of the school. But, and otherwise, I think it's fairly straightforward. I hope you've all had a chance to at least superficially look at it prior to this meeting. Obviously, I anticipate a fuller discussion and the vote at the next meeting. But does anybody have any questions at this time of an immediate nature?
So before questions, any other member of the Policy Committee wish to make a comment before we go into Q and A? Mr. Confortito, anything? Ms. Carnell, anything? No?
No, I think we've covered it with a lot of changes.
Questions for the committee? Mr. Patton.
Through the chair to Ms. Maxon Cunelli, could you at least point, one of the things that we had some contention with last time was some legal ease, and could you point me to the area, was that entirely taken out?
Gone.
It's just gone?
Yeah.
Okay, that's why I was trying to figure out what it changed to, and I couldn't find it.
Where it comes closest is on page six, under the five prevention section, capital letter C, number one. So that area there regarding peanut and tree nuts causing the most allergic reactions, that section there pretty much contains what we chose to keep from that previous language.
Where basically the --
So it was almost cut in half.
The final sentence is, "All stakeholders share in responsibility of keeping children safe in the classroom by complying with this policy."
Correct.
Fair enough.
Other questions for the committee at this point? Mrs. Lou McCormick?
I generally like a lot of the changes that you have in here. This might be minor, but I have to say it, because whenever I read a policy, I think about it in terms of certain things that it should cover. So under, my question is on page two and three, and maybe I should have brought this up earlier, but I just, it occurred to me as I was reading it this one time around, under the home, because this is a school policy, should we, in there, ever be dictating what families should be doing?
Very good point, and actually, it's important to note that the entire page two and the very top of page three up to where it says roman numeral one, we consider that a preamble that would not in fact be anything that's a dictating policy. That's sort of just setting up the structure of the rest of the policy, setting up the expectations and the hopes, but that in fact is not policy itself. That doesn't really start until, one, identifying students with life-threatening allergies. So it would be as if you had a, I mean, of course, we had to do a page and a half where other policies might have a simple opening introductory paragraph setting out the rationale for a policy. This is that, in that this is not dictating, it doesn't come with administrative regs, this part here, it is a preamble.
Right. The only, I guess the only issue is that we use such a strong word as "families shall." And this is a minor take it for whether you, you know, we can be comfortable and just live with it, but we could just say, "The district shall provide families with education," as opposed to saying "families shall." Do you know what I'm saying?
I do hear what you're saying. I think we shied away from the "district shall" because part of this is what families are taking on as their own responsibility. Yes, we do believe that the district will be, I mean, we do say and throughout that the district will be communicating the policy. Obviously, we provide, the training and education is a critical part of this. Some of this involves what the families should be doing who have the allergic children and as well as those who are in the classroom with them.
I guess I prefer the word "should" than "shall," because that implies that they will do it, and we have no clue if they'll do it or not. So we would hope that families would do it. Such a minor thing, I don't really want to take too much time on it, but I'll throw that out.
Thank you for bringing it up.
If you meet one more time, you might consider softening the language.
We are not meeting one more time on this. It is our hope that at the next meeting, we are making any amendments that the board wishes to make, voting and owning it.
A shall, should be should.
Okay, I've written that down. Thank you.
Anything else, Mrs. Lou McCormick? Any other questions from the board members for the committee? Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I guess through the chair to Mrs. Maxon Cunelli, I know this has come up before, and I was just wondering if there was any more specific information about the cost of the protein soluble wipes, or if there would be somebody on the staff who could address that? You know, because I'm just still not clear on exactly how much more costs we're talking about, you know, and I think it would be important to understand, because we're talking about 4,000-plus elementary school students, just to get a sense of how much more money this will be costing the district.
Yes?
If anyone. If anyone...
That question has been forwarded?
Yes.
And, excellent.
Mr. Cullen, you want to respond to that?
Yes, I met with the two supervisors today that ordered the material and they're investigating it. We don't currently use that type of baby wipe in the district, but I did do a history of the baby wipes we are using now. I don't have the actual title and name, but I do know that we have been spending between $6,000 and $8,000 a year on baby wipes for the elementary school level.
But we have to get a price, almost like a per wipe price, and then multiply it by the number of kids, the number of days.
Number of schools.
Number, you know, and so forth. So we don't have that information at this moment?
No.
Okay. So we, or do we have a better estimate than that? Because this will be new, at least at elementary classrooms. So, Mrs. Parks, do you have further insight into this?
And could, if you could, could you clarify, are we replacing the type of wipes or we're adding a wipe in addition to what we're using?
So we have been told that the only wipe that would work to completely eliminate the allergen is a protein soluble wipe, which is not exactly what we use right now. We calculated today, assuming three wipes per child. So I think to back up, when we first talked about this and assumed the cost would be minimal is because we had not put in the part of the policy that said that was peanut and tree nut free. We were just then talking about classrooms that would be designated as students having food allergies. Then we added the peanut and tree nut free classroom, so every classroom would have to go through the hand washing protocol. So what we're looking at now, I think we calculated today, if a child needs a wipe before snack and a wipe for their hands after snack and a wipe for their desk, that's three wipes per student per day. And I think we calculated with the total number of students, it would be 2,760,000 wipes a year. So we haven't calculated the exact cost of a wipe, but approximately it's looking like $55,000, I think.
Just one correction, there's no part of the policy that mandates the use prior to snack. It's only after.
It's only after, so...
Yeah.
Can I also ask one more question? They do wash hands now before snack for hygiene.
Okay, I'm not saying that hygiene all around isn't a good idea. I'm just saying in terms of anything that's being piggybacked onto this policy or attached to this policy, that is not part of this policy.
Yeah, I just, I just looked, it's number five here. It says, "All elementary classrooms will provide protein soluble hand wipes for mandated use for students to use after snack if hand washing is not available." And then the number six is, "All desks will be cleaned with soap and water, protein soluble wipes, or other approved cleaning agents after snacks are eaten in the classroom." So that's the two places where they're mentioned.
So maybe two-thirds of that number.
Two-thirds of that number, yeah.
And that also does not take into account the fact that hand washing can replace them altogether. So that's one of the reasons why this has been a hard number to peg, so...
And I have one more question, if there's no children...
Mrs. Lou McCormick, are you finished with your line of questioning?
No, actually, I just, I guess so then...
Let her finish your line of questioning.
My question would be then, so could you then just do hand washing, I guess? I mean, it says if hand washing is not available, I guess in some classrooms, maybe in portables, but they have sinks in portables, no? It's just in the kindergarten classrooms that have sinks? I'm trying to think. It's been a while.
A lot of classrooms have sinks, the portables don't.
Right. So...
So hand washing is a possibility in a lot of schools, of classrooms, but not all?
But not all. So in some, it would have to be the protein soluble wipes at all times?
Not all.
And others, there would be the option?
Yeah, not all. And I think the principals would want to get involved with the timeline for getting every student to wash their hands.
Right, because then you are looking at time because it's faster to, I'm assuming, to wipe, go like this, than line everyone up to wash their hands, but then you have to weigh that with the costs.
Correct.
Yeah.
Mrs. Lou McCormick.
I'm just wondering, if there is no child with a nut allergy in that classroom, do they then have to wipe down their desks still?
Yes, because the policy says all classrooms will be peanut and tree nut free. So the assumption is if a child, there's nothing about reading labels, so you have to make the assumption that an allergen could get in the classroom, and so the safest procedure to ensure there is no spread of an allergen is the hand washing and the desk washing.
I was just saying, if there was no child with a peanut allergy, like let's say there's a grade with no peanut allergy, I mean...
But they might not know they have...
Okay, well, it's, two issues are involved in that, which as an educational matter, I would prefer to not let that topic lie if I could respond to it, because that's a very common question in the public, so I appreciate the opportunity to respond to it. Two things at work there. One, what Mrs. Gerber had just said, which is, it's astounding the numbers of people who do not know and who find out that they have a type of nut allergy through a severe allergic reaction. So it's recognizing that that data and those numbers are very real. But second, there's the fact that in our schools, children are not only not restricted to their own classroom, they're not restricted to their own seat. You have an indoor recess, children can be combined in one room. There are all sorts of situations where there's movement in the building. And so this is just the acknowledgement that we need to maintain this peanut tree nut-free environment as best we can to prevent the exposure to the allergens. And this is also going to help with other allergens. It is not just peanut and tree nut, and this would certainly help with that factor, but it's attempting to protect the classroom environment where the children are being, having their instruction delivered. So that also with the idea towards inclusion, who wants, okay, you're in the room that has the kid with the nut, oh, you have to do all these extra protocols and you're not. I mean, that's, it's already a divisive issue where many students are very much feeling excluded, and this is one way that we are trying across the district at the request of our administrators to have a consistent policy district-wide, because this is also going to contribute to something that they're learning in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade. This is just part of their environment. This is part of how they help their classmates to stay safe, how they help themselves to stay safe. So that was probably a lengthier answer than you were expecting, but, so that's a lot of what's factoring into that.
Any follow-up, Mrs. Lou McCormick?
I'm just wondering, you know, we've had an outbreak of peanut allergies. I could see one day that it's eradicated and nobody has peanut allergies, but we continue to have this protocol just because we've always done it, so why ever stop? So I'm just wondering if we have any safeguards in the process to, just to address the fact that we do this because we need to. We're not just doing this for the sake of it. And I understand that it's hard to know because an allergy could pop up at any time, and this is to address all allergies, but I'm just taking the other side of the coin for a second and saying, okay, one day, we may not have this outbreak of peanut allergies just like it suddenly popped up. It could go away again. Will we just keep doing this and not even think about it because it's policy?
I could certainly see that that would come up as a matter. There'd be no one who'd be happier to come a few decades down the road back to this board to say it's time you took a look at your policy manual again. I think that would be a fabulous position to be in, but one of the parts of this policy also is that there's an annual reexamination by staff and by the district multidisciplinary team. So that exact issue should never be able to happen because there's this constant review. And if we had members of our nursing staff, members of our administration coming to us saying the numbers aren't there anymore, then that could prompt a review right there immediately.
Any other questions from board members? I have one question, but see, what other question? Mrs. Gerber?
Well, I guess, assuming that at our next meeting, we vote and approve this policy, I know there's some language in here which I think is new, mentioning, you know, September 1st, 2015, oh, here we go, the food in schools. But just in terms of the overall policy, this will be implemented immediately? And I guess in terms of the communication, I know in the Communication 6E, beginning in the school year 2015, 16, the district shall annually, not later than October 1st, provide notice to parents. So between now and October 1st, what kind of notification will be in place to tell parents and everyone that this is going on? Because I know it's, it's obviously garnered a lot of attention, but there's still a lot of people I'm sure have absolutely no idea that this is being discussed and that this is going to be implemented, so...
I believe that's part of the administrative regs that Dr. Title will be taking care of?
Got it. Okay, just wanted to, because people have asked, so just wanted to make sure we got that clear. Thank you.
But on that point, it appears that the peanut and tree nut ban has been extended beyond the elementary schools in this policy. That does appear to be new.
Yep.
Okay.
That was the part I pointed out, that D, food in schools generally.
Right, right. And that the September 1, 2015 was put in there intentionally because by then, the kids at the high school will be able to eat lunch in the cafeteria.
That's correct.
Is that the rationale? Okay, thanks.
If there are no other questions, one question. It is a complex issue, as one of our speakers said, and as soon as we adopt this policy, there'll be some other food group that suddenly pops up that is not peanuts and tree nuts. And talking to other board members from other school districts where they have just simply said, no food in the classrooms, all food in the cafeteria, similar to what we are saying for PTAs, as unpopular as that might be, is not that actually the safest route to go and the least complicated to just simply say for elementary school students, no food in the classrooms?
It's interesting that you should use the phrase least complicated, because if there's one thing this policy has taught me, there's a complication to everything. That's, one of the, actually of our discussions last week was some very explicit suggestions to give to the district team regarding how do you keep the classroom safe in terms of the exposure to allergens. We ultimately struck that language as once again crossing that line of operationalizing with this policy, and it will be something the district team is going to be charged with using recommended best practices to enforce these ideas. And I would have to think that that, along with several others, recommended best practices, would be something that would be discussed by that committee. But that's again where the three of us very much felt that this needed to go to a greater audience with all the stake, with more stakeholders represented to see how could that happen? I know at the committee level, we found it invaluable that many elementary school teachers attended and spoke and brought issues to our attention, some of which we adjusted language for and others of which we acknowledged their points but did not change language for. But there was in fact no one there from middle school or high school, which is another voice that we think needs to be part of this, and that needs to be part of that discussion. But I certainly think that as this takes the next step, hopefully with this vote at the next meeting, that this district team will address that exact issue as one of many possible options.
Okay, and so if it, if it did, that would be something that you would assume could happen under this policy if the district, if the administrative regs said that's the best way to ensure safety?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to, I'm sorry, Park, did you want to?
I just had one more question I just thought, she was talking.
Mr. Patton, and then Mr. Fadabene, and then Dr. Title.
I'll go last.
Go ahead.
I don't, again, through the chair to Ms. Maxon Cunelli, I don't remember that this was in the previous versions as well, but I'd been thinking about this a while, and I know we'd talked about it. The multidisciplinary team...
Would you identify the section if you were thinking?
Sorry, yes, page six, five prevention, A, where the first mention of the district-wide multidisciplinary team. Do we have anything either in our bylaws or anywhere that says how such a team should be put together? In other words, who would comprise such a team? I know we've talked about, will there be, you know, faculty, will there be parents, et cetera? And I know that's the intent, but do we have to specify that?
I mean, I know that we've, the only thing I can recall from bylaws to answer your question would be when an ad hoc committee is formed, which would be formed by the chair. But the idea of this is, this is the how we want it to be, you know, this is what we want done, a district-wide team formed, and it then comes back on to the administration in terms of operationalizing this. And to me, that would be part of this. We have, as a committee, clearly communicated our expectations of all stakeholders being represented on this because the feedback is so important. But that's our view that we didn't need to do anything more than say, a team shall do this and it will be formed here in central office.
And what part of the Board of Health's jurisdiction, if any, does this team have? Or does the Board of Health oversee it? Do they have nothing to do with it? I know that's been a bit of contention also.
A bit.
Getting their opinions.
That's an excellent point. It's through the organization of Fairfield's Town Charter, the relationship between the Board of Ed and Board of Health is different than it might be than it is in other districts. You know, they are not under the direct purview of Dr. Title, for example, or anyone here. They're, in that regard, a separate entity. I would, I mean, obviously, that was one thing that our committee, and again, one of the reasons why our committee started going down a road and then came back. We are not medical professionals. We were not having medical professionals there as paid consultants as part of our policy committee work. On the other hand, the idea of having medical professionals as part of this district team is invaluable. And I have to believe that the Board of Health is going, they have read this, and, Mrs. Parks can correct me if I'm wrong, the Board of Health has read this and, I'll use the phrase, agreed to it, that they didn't have any problems with it. I'm hoping that their role changes from being what I would describe as a bit passive in that regard to wanting to actively engage with this team. It's their nursing staff who are the best trained people in the buildings to be able to follow through on this, and most importantly, to support the staff as they're dealing with something new in the building. But that's not something that we can mandate.
Is that it, Mr. Patton?
Yeah, so right now, and I guess directly to the...
If I could, just to clarify.
Sure.
That district-wide team is outlined in the Connecticut State Department of Education guidelines.
That specific phrase, multidisciplinary team is...
Yes, as far as who should be on it and what stakeholders should be on it, and there are, it goes from administration to Department of Health and professionals and so forth. So it is dictated in the CSDE guidelines.
And actually, I forgot, last fall, I gave the entire board a copy of that list specifically. I believe Mr. Fadabene had asked the question, so I've given you that list, but I can provide it for you again if you'd like.
I do remember that, so I think...
Mrs. Lou McCormick, listen. So it's, the nature of the team is identified in...
Is identified in the state statutes, which I know we normally put in a...
No, not the state statute, in the Connecticut Guidelines for the Management of Life-Threatening Allergies.
From the Department of Education.
Okay.
Gotcha.
I'll get it for you.
Please send that to me again.
Yes, we'll do.
Is that it, Mr. Patton?
Yes.
But Mr. Fadabene, you were next.
Yeah, I just had a point of information. I just wanted to comment. This is obviously a controversial or changing issue, and I think healthcare professionals are even at odds in certain issues with respect to allergens. And I just wanted to make the board aware and maybe pass out a copy. There was a recent article in the Los Angeles Times, it was only dated yesterday, but it reports a presentation at the annual meeting of the American Academy of Allergy, Asthma, and Immunology, and was published, this article was published in the New England Journal of Medicine. And basically, the article in the LA Times was entitled, "Peanut Allergies for Children: The Best Treatment May Be Peanuts." And in other words, while at one time, the American Academy of Pediatrics advised parents in 2000 to keep peanuts away from infants and toddlers, some of that philosophy is changing. And in essence, the article basically indicates that while at one time, we thought keeping peanuts away, maybe exposing kids to peanuts actually prevents allergies and prevents allergens from, or prevents allergens from having effect on those kids. And it's just a new study and new thought process. It also indicates that the American Academy of Pediatrics has already withdrawn its endorsement of peanut avoidance. So you have some body of authority evidently indicating that peanut avoidance may not be the answer and that there's other issues to address. But I just wanted to raise that as a point of information, and maybe the board can put this in their next...
Okay, can we, because we will be debating this...
Right.
...when we vote it, but let me go to Mrs. Lou McCormick and can I say...
May I respond to that, though?
Let me go to Mrs. Lou McCormick, and then I'll give you the last, next to the last word. Dr. Title would like the last word. Mrs. Lou McCormick.
So you mentioned that the multidisciplinary team composition was within those guidelines? Do we have a team in place?
No, because no policy's been passed.
So, okay, so the guideline only applies if it was within our policy. It doesn't really say that every district should just have a multidisciplinary team to review issues such as this.
I have a copy of the state statute in here, but that's part of my five-and-a-half-page opening that I read last time. I'd have to look it over again.
So I guess basically, you don't have a team in place?
No.
And this is going to be the start of having a team in place?
Right.
If we were supposed to have one, we didn't feel that we needed one, so we didn't have one in place?
No, there was nothing in it that mandated that. There's reference to being consistent with the guidelines. There is nothing in the state statute that mandates that a team is already in place.
And so does the statute now mandate that this team must be in place now that we have this policy? No, so it's still not required.
No, this is our policy. We are looking to form such a team to handle some of the issues, for example, such as what Mr. Dwyer raised.
So this is the first time that we have introduced the requirement to have this group in place for the district?
Yes. Yes.
It probably got introduced about a year ago, as we have continued to debate this. Dr. Title, your last comment.
Just a couple of things I think we can do between now and the next meeting. One is, we want to get better information about the costs. There was some estimating that we did on this quickly, and I think we can get firmer costs on that. So I think we can, so the board has that information before the meeting. If we get it soon enough, we'll just email it out. We don't wait and give it to you.
Thank you.
That'd be one thing. The second thing is, I think it would be helpful, because one of the issues that's been raised, and in particular, the elementary teachers, is the time element here. How much time will this take? Will this take away from instructional time? Obviously, this instructional time is near and dear to all of our hearts, and if potentially snack takes an extra 20 minutes, I'm just making up a number, then that's an issue. And something we'd have to look at because we have too much to teach and not enough time to teach it, as it is. So I think what I'd like to do is have a couple of volunteer, I see some elementary principals out there that I can look at, or commandeer. I'd like to run a couple trial runs of this in, in the schools with different grade levels, as if this were actually in place. Now, that we may not have those exact wipes, but at least we could see how long, you know, yeah, like a little simulation. I'd almost say pilot, but that's like Voldemort around here, so I don't say that. But what we could do is, you know, at different grade levels, see, you know, how burdensome is this? Is there a way? And then, you know, not that the policy necessarily changes as a result of it, but I think that's an issue we could come up with some information on that the board would, would recognize. I think we'd like to do that at, you know, maybe at a kindergarten, and then a second, and then a fourth, just to get a sense of, you know, can this be done, you know, fairly rapidly? And I think that might assuage some of the fears people have that this is going to take, you know, forever. So that'd be one thing. And I think we do need to have some conversation at the secondary level, because I don't think they've been really big part of the conversation about.
Correct.
Because we hate to put something out that's really hard to enforce, and what's the enforceability? What will that look like? How will this practically play out at the secondary level? It hasn't been a focus until, until recently. So I think we need some conversation with the secondary folks about that, and maybe talk that through at the next meeting. So those are just, I think, three pieces of maybe additional information between now. It doesn't require a policy rewrite necessarily, but I just want to, so I think we could do some work that will help maybe with some of those questions.
Thank you very much.
Sounds like a good game plan. We'll proceed with that.
Without a courtesy to the chair, it looks like she would like to make the last comment.
Just a couple of specific responses, and again, I'm looking forward to an even fuller discussion at the next meeting. To Mr. Fadabene's point, I've read the same article, so I was aware of this study. And again, and it is an interesting topic, I mean, and how often this happens in medicine and in science in general, where what once was thought to be accepted best practice, research comes out to disprove it, and that's been, you know, very much the cycle of medicine. This particular study was a small study. It was also done with toddlers. There has been nothing done with elementary school children, nor does this address, or help us to address the fact that there is a statute mandating that we come out with guidelines, with a policy that will help to prevent the exposure to allergens. So I might direct Mr. Fadabene to bring that up with his state legislators as well, since they're the ones who gave us a state statute. It's just a suggestion you may do with as you please. But there are also students with allerg, these life-threatening allergies in our classroom. The focus is not, and our primary focus has been in the conversation about, has not been, how do we help the children who has never been diagnosed. While that has been part of the dialogue, the primary focus is on those diagnosed children, of whom we average about one and a half per elementary school classroom. These are known numbers in our buildings right now, and there is nothing in that study that would suggest in any size, shape, or form that these children will be better protected by starting to feed them peanuts. And then finally, to Dr. Title's point, that was actually information we've already received, but that's only the policy committee, and that's not in any structure. We had, did have elementary school teachers come and speak to us about that time factor, but that's certainly something that would be an appropriate part of the next discussion.
So you've given up your right for last comment, since you mentioned Mr. Fadabene's name, and he seems to have his hand on his microphone. Do you wish to say something?
Since I was mentioned, I certainly have to respond. Well, I think that study I mentioned involved young children under five. There was an initial study mentioned in there, which, which a larger group of children that had similar results, which prompted that study that was mentioned as well. So it, there are a number of studies out there that are indicating certain things. They just can't be ignored. What the effect is, is uncertain. But it's information, it's knowledge, and it's more than one study. It's just not that study. So there is a growing change of opinion in the, in the.
Point of order, that abstract, you're.
Excuse me? Please, excuse me?
Sorry.
Thank you.
So, it's just information.
Yeah.
I didn't say it's right or wrong. I just indicated that it's some consideration. So that was the only purpose of that.
Excuse me. This is health and education, so there are an infinite number of studies, I am sure.
Right.
If that finishes the conversation among the board, Mr. Convetito.
The other issue I would like to address.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Fadabene, I thought you were finished.
Is that the state guidance was to the effect that the district should have a plan. The state guidance was not that the elimination of allergens in the classroom is mandatory. I just wanted to make that clarification. The state guidance is, you have to have a plan, in essence.
Thank you.
If he's going to quote state statute, I got to make sure the state statute is correct.
Mr. Convetito is next.
I apologize, I didn't even see his hand up.
I just want to, you know, there's a lot of stakeholders on all sides of this issue. And it's taken us literally a year to get to this point. And the policy does have, for better descriptor, relief valves in it. It will be reviewed annually. There will be stakeholders constantly monitoring this as far as the regs go and so forth. And we would, I would expect that we will probably see some changes to this policy as it's implemented throughout next year. So I'd ask the board to be open to that. We need to get something in place as a starting point to get this thing operational. If we need to make some changes along the way, like I said, I believe that there are, there's ample flexibility within the policy to allow us to do that with the multidisciplinary task team. And I would hope we could, could move this forward at the next meeting.
Thank you. Can I go to the public or not?
Did the public comment on this?
The public is allowed to comment on items as they come up.
Sorry. I just, last comment. Protocols to prevent exposure to food allerg.
As long as you don't mention a board member's name.
I'm not mentioning any board member's name, and as I said, maybe I should have reread my five-and-a-half-page opening statement, but fifth requirement of the state statute are protocols to prevent exposure to food allergens.
Thank you. So this will be on the next regular meeting's agenda as an action item. Any member of the public wish to comment on this agenda item, the first read of policy Thank you for waiting to speak instead of speaking from the audience.
Sorry, I didn't realize with the new protocols that I could speak on this. Tricia Donovan, Fairfield resident. I just wanted to address the misinformation that was just put out about the medical abstract. Immunotherapy is nothing new. It's been in the field works for many years now. The most recent abstract is done on infants with a predisposition to allergic conditions. They use children who already had an egg allergy, who they thought may develop a peanut allergy, and fed them small amounts of peanut snacks in order to develop, because what the body does is recognize the protein chain and attacks it. It's immune, an autoimmune disorder, and what they try to do is get the body used to the protein chain so it doesn't attack it. So this does not mean that children can start rolling around in peanuts and they will be immune to it. It doesn't change once the, the allergic condition has taken hold of the body. It's very hard to reverse. They are working on ways to do it, but that certainly does not change the fact in the classroom that we can't have kids rolling in peanuts.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the public wish to comment on this discussion item?
Tina Brown, 35 Quaker Lane, and actually, it's a question. First, thank you for all you've done on this and the hard work and the change to the legalese. As a secondary school teacher, whom do I ask a question of for that part? I don't want to waste your time now, I just wanted to, who do I contact?
I'm sure you're.
For the part that talked about the secondary schools. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Any other member of the public wish to speak on this agenda item? Please state your name and address.
Kelly Dunn, 205 Tuck O'Leane. Given the amount of time placed on this policy, and there has been a lot of time placed on researching the legalese that's gone into the policy, I certainly hope that enough research and trial time is given so that this, this academic year, so that when it is fully, you know, ready for implementation, it'll be, you know, a go. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to speak on this agenda item? Seeing nobody coming forward, we'll move on to new business, discussion of long-range facilities plan. Dr. Title and Mr. Cullen.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to call your attention to the enclosures first that we gave you before I talk about anything else. Mr. Cullen and the principals were very helpful in preparing these. I believe I have, Mrs. Cutella is here. I see Mrs. Roxby, and I don't know if Mr. Chase is here or not. He's on his way. He has math, he has math night. You can't miss that. So they were very helpful in preparing the schematics. So there were, there were a couple things at our last meeting that we thought would be helpful to you in making decisions about where to place items. So we, we looked at, some people had mentioned, you know, maybe we could save some money if we reduced the total capacity of the school. Right now, in the long-range plan, both Holland Hill and Mill Hill are designed, or were being carried as 504 schools. So we looked at the number of classrooms going forward that we might need, and we, and Mr. Cullen worked on this, reestimated if we reduced the recommended capacity at these schools to more accurately reflect the 10-year enrollment projection, you would still take care of all the deficiencies, and you would be able to house all the children in there, what the savings would be. So for example, in the first column, I'm looking at this sheet that's green, and if you print it in color, it's green, says, "Long Range Facilities Plan BOE Requested Information", that sheet. So you could see the Holland Hill side of things, that the original project costs were about 9.9 million, and that if we reduced the capacity from 504 to 462, the new total cost is estimated at just slightly under $9.2 million. So savings of about $800,000. And the enrollment projection at Holland Hill over the next 10 years is 438, so there's still some headroom in there. So that's something for the board to consider. One of the reasons to consider this is that as we put this waterfall together, you know, there's only so much money to be bonded, and we're going to be looking for ways of, essentially, spreading out the costs and dealing with some of the overages in the other projects. So if we don't need to build it out to 504, we can show you what the savings would look like. Mill Hill, which is, under, under our current plan, is designed as a 504, and the enrollment is, you know, 413 or so, and it's expected to stay in about that range. If we built that out to a 441 capacity, 21 classrooms, then the savings there is approximately $1.675 million. So if we put those into the waterfall chart, then essentially, the board would be saving about $2.4 million, which is, would put a big dent in the, some of the overages in the other projects. So that's what that sheet is. Then the other three sheets are the floor plans and the current usage at each school. And I'd really like to thank the principals for doing this, because this is, you know, grinding work. And I think I'll defer any questions on those to the principals who are here. One thing I would point out is that in the Roger Sherman Elementary School plan, moving forward, that is not, the improvements at that school are not to increase capacity, that that school could only get so much work done because of the FEMA restrictions. You can only spend so much money on that school every couple of years. And so the improvements at that school are fire suppression, HVAC improvements, what else, Tom? Something along the, right?
Yep, building code, fire suppression system, building.
Okay. So it's core, core stuff in the building as opposed to adding classroom space on. The classroom space was added.
Yeah, and it was designed to a 504 capacity.
Right. So it's, it's there. The one thing we do need to deal with also in the Sherman, we either need to deal with it in Sherman in the projects, or we need to deal with it in another way, is the connecting the annex building to the main building for security. So that's, that's also, but Sherman, when you look at it, there's never, there's nothing in there that would, would cause us to add space in that school right now. And the biggest thing, though, I think, at Holland Hill, and this sort of swings in, and I think the, the board was sort of leaning in this direction. If you look at the Holland Hill floor plan, you could see that not only is everything fully utilized, but if you look at the Holland Hill floor plan, then I'm going to stop. There's one classroom in there that actually is divided into four pieces, and there's four teachers sharing one classroom. When we have to, if we have to add a section there next year, then that's going to have to go back to be a regular classroom, and those four teachers are going to be nomads. If we have to add, because this question came up, I think Mrs. Gerber asked it, or somebody asked it at the last meeting, maybe it was in reference to the budget, what would happen there? And the next step, generally what we do at schools, is then we go to art on a cart, is kind of the next level down from that. The art room becomes a classroom, and art goes on a cart. So as, if we're adding two more sections there, that really gets squeezed, and you can really see, see it on there. The stage is already used, most of the other places are used. Not exactly sure where those people will go, but there is a real crunch at Holland Hill that really stands out in these. So, Tom, do you want to add anything to what I said, or have I once again taken all of your talking points?
Did fine.
I did. All right. Facilities is my hobby.
So.
So I think we'll open it up for questions, and if we feel like, if you want to hear from a principal at one of the schools, they're available.
And this is questions on the entire long-range facilities plan, although the focus seems to be at the moment on which of the major projects get moved forward first.
Yeah, then I'll talk at some point about other things we have to do to get this to work, but for now, if we could stay on this information, that'd be great, then I can move on to other things.
Mrs. Max and Canelli, followed by Mr. Convetito. I'll just walk around. Ms. Carnell and Mrs. Loomacormick.
Okay, just a couple of questions immediately. I'm not sure that I, I may have more. Dr. Title speaks of it as a hypothetical of if Holland Hill gets a section added, but according to the February numbers, you're, based in the kindergarten, you've tripped it. So right now, if these numbers maintain, and if you have three, if there are three, and I see the Holland Hill principal is here, I don't know if she's the one who gets to do this, or if that's a central office issue, so I'm not sure to whom to direct this question. But by virtue of having 23, 23, 24 in kindergarten, if those had been the starting numbers, there would have been four sections. So what you reference as a hypothetical doesn't feel like a hypothetical anymore.
No.
So my question is, where will those four professionals go?
Well, Ms. Cutella talked about it. She knows the building best. We brought her out tonight, so we might as well give her a star turn. So for those who don't know, this is Laura Cutella. She's the principal at Holland Hill.
Okay, thank you. So right now, we are currently over our numbers for kindergarten. So next year, as is, we will have four sections of first grade. Where our numbers are fluctuating is that group that is going from second grade to third grade. Currently, I have 73 students in second grade, giving me the four sections with a class size of 23. Going to third grade, it gives me three sections instead of that four, so I'm two students away of increasing to four sections. And I don't know if this is going to add into your question, but we are current, we're consistently getting new students in.
Right.
We've received a new student in yesterday. In March, we're receiving another new kindergartner and a new third grader. So that's just in the month of February, March.
And are those kindergartens getting additional support? I mean, is that becoming a budget issue, that they're getting additional support in those classrooms?
They'll get additional support in the classrooms, but we don't split after about a month. We don't disrupt the whole world, because one kid comes in, and you go through the whole thing, and you split, and then somebody moves out, you collapse them again.
Right.
You know, we don't collapse them either.
Right.
So if a class falls below the guidelines, we don't say, oh, sorry, you had four sections, now you have three. So it works both ways, but there has been a plan, Mr. Rafferty's been working with Ms. Cortella on that, but I guess the question would be, if you have to displace the four, I think this was your question, I don't want to miss it.
Right. Where do the four go?
If you have to displace the four people, if that was the plan, where would they go?
I don't have a place for those four currently, and the next thing to go is art. So those are my two next classrooms.
And then I'm also curious, as an instructional question, how on earth is gifted taught while strings and band are going on?
So we have a rotating schedule, so the day that strings is taught, gifted will either be teaching in the library or in the all-purpose room around the lunch waves.
So that teacher can't establish his or her materials in any one place, then?
That teacher is extremely flexible.
Outstanding. Outstanding.
The other factor to consider with our increasing enrollment, we will have an additional special education teacher, so that will be a fifth person to find a home for.
And since you're up here for Holland Hill, I might as well ask you, just how much is this, how often is this hallway designated space in use as, is that an all-day thing, that that hallway is essentially a small classroom?
Okay. So the hallway that it's in reference to is in between, if you look at the floor plan, in between the two first-grade classrooms. So there is a ceiling-mounted swing in that hallway for sensory input for students that have it as part of their OT or PT plan, so their occupational therapist or physical therapist is working with that student on some sensory regulation. So we have multiple students using that hallway for that purpose, as well as special education teachers delivering small group instruction that do not have a designated individual space to instruct.
Okay.
Mr. Confortito?
Can I just follow up on that point? How do you get around the HIP issues with doing OT and PT in a hallway?
So our main entrance is located in between, so if you see where that large space is, where it says the all-purpose room, and you can see where the school psychologist is, that is our main entrance door, that hallway there. So that far hallway down there is not an entry point into the school, it's an entry point for teachers at the beginning of the day and at the end of the day leaving, and there is a little, like, you know, when you go to the doctor's offices, and they have that little screen that.
Privacy screen.
On wheels, is blocking off that hallway. And it goes out when there's a student in the hallway, and it moves back and forth.
Okay. I'm familiar with the ring, I used to be at Sherman before we renovated.
John, Mr. Confortito, are you finished, or?
Well, I don't know if we wanted, if anyone in one does want to ask Holland Hill questions while she was up, or should I continue with mine? I can do it.
Are you done with Holland Hill?
I am done with Holland Hill.
Okay. So Mr. Confortito, do you have any comments that you want to make that would?
Yeah, as far as, yes. As far as the two fifth-grade portables, what do we have for sightlines to that and/or cameras and so forth, or fencing?
Well, first of all, we don't want to get into too much detail about that in public, but you might remember that part of the, and what we did make public, as part of our security package, bonding package.
Right.
That we put forward, was that we did include money for fencing in all portable classrooms at all of our schools, so that there would be security. So that is included. There is no fencing there right now, but it is, it is in the plan to be done if the bonding package ever makes it through all the town bodies, so.
Well, let me phrase it a different way. Given the location of those classrooms as opposed to the classrooms at Mill Hill, and again, and the one at Sherman, the band and strings is also a concern to me, have we addressed those safety concerns as they sit right now, not moving forward?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Any other questions on Holland Hill? Mr. Confortito, any other questions on Holland Hill? Ms. Carnell, any questions on Holland Hill?
I have one for both, so.
Okay.
Wait, you have a Holland Hill question?
No, I'm just so that we can have the principal sit down, and a different school principal come up. Any questions on Holland Hill for the benefit of the principal?
It's for Mr. Cullen, so.
Okay. Mark, any questions on Holland Hill for the principal?
Yeah, just quickly, on the, on the classroom that has the four teachers in there, I guess my first question would be, how is it divided up? Are there partitions?
So in the middle of the room, there is a large bookcase that goes almost all the way to the ceiling, so it's storage on both sides, that serves as a middle divider. The divider on like, the two sides are portable dividers. On one side, it's a wooden divider that probably a five-foot-nine adult could see over. On the other side is a more flexible partition that has more of a sound barrier on it. So both of them are portable.
And obviously, by the, by the diagram, this is just a standard-sized classroom?
Yeah, it's the same size as my other third-grade classrooms.
Okay. And then the math and science teacher that's in that bottom, lower-right corner, is that a specialist, or is that an actual math and science teacher?
So our math and science teacher does a portion of her job as coaching teachers, and the other portion is pulling intervention groups, either working with small groups of students or individual students, as part of our early intervention model.
Okay.
So students that are not at goal for math get intervention either on a pull-out basis or a push-in basis in the classroom.
Okay.
Mrs. Lou McCormick, do you have any questions for the Holland Hill principal?
Yeah, I think it's very interesting that you're experiencing so much growth in your area, and I'm wondering, is all of it from within your kind of area, district, or are there kids that are attending Holland Hill that are from not the Holland Hill district area?
So registration is centralized here at Central Office, so in order to register at Holland Hill, you have to prove residency, that you're living in the Holland Hill district. So I would defer to Dr.
There's no.
They opted out.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no open choice, opt-out, opt-in that applies to Holland Hill. It's just all kids that live in the Holland Hill district. We don't have any district-wide programs there where kids come in from other places.
I think the only exception is if a child moves within their fifth-grade year, there's a policy in place that they are allowed to stay through the end of their fifth-grade year. So we may have one or two students in that case, but it's not on a grade level that we're.
We don't have a big inflow, influx from, I thought McKinley at one point hadn't opt-out, where they could opt into other schools.
Not to Holland.
Not to Holland Hill.
Not to Holland Hill.
Right. Not to Holland Hill. This, Holland Hill's our second-most racially balanced school, so they're pretty much excluded from that. But we have, the board has a policy that if, say, family moves, even if it's not fifth grade, so suppose a family moves, like, right now, and they've got a third grader, at the family's option, Mrs. Parks gets to deal with these all the time, and we made this very clear, because we always granted it, at the family's option, the parents can, can keep the child there till the end of that school year, then they have to go to the correct attendance zone. But the same thing could be happening, where there could be two kids at Holland Hill, for example, who are staying at Holland Hill because they've moved out, and at the same time, there could be two kids who should be going to Holland Hill from another school, who are being held by the parents at that school till they finish the year. So that's pretty much of a wash, but we don't have anything. It's really been a lot of move-ins to that particular part of town. I don't know I can explain it, other than certain parts of town turnover, it's not like there's a big building boom there. That's just what's been happening. And the other point I want to make about this is that there's immediate issues that we're going to have to deal with here next year and the year after. The timing on this, I mean, is, this takes a while to happen, all right? So we don't want to give the impression that even if the board said, let's move full speed ahead, move it up to, you know, first place on the list, that these problems are going to be solved in the next even two years, or three years it'll take at least, by the time this thing moves its way through the package. So we're going to have to deal with this issue on a short-term basis, on a temporary basis for several years, because it takes a while for, you know, for projects to get approved. And so we will continue to work on this, but there's, there's very little that the board can do to solve this immediate issue. But this has happened at other schools. It was at Sherman, it was at Osborne, we periodically had this happen, and I give great credit to our staff and the principal for being very creative and very flexible.
If there are no other questions for the principal at Holland Hill, thank you very much. Ms. Carnell, you had a question for the, Mr. Cullen on Holland Hill?
In both schools.
Both schools. Please go ahead.
I just want to make sure that I'm reading this correctly. It says, okay, the portables, it says, "Total room deficiencies." So are you saying that at Holland Hill, we're missing nine?
Correct.
I just want to make sure. And at Mill Hill, 11 and a half?
Yes.
I'm not going to ask about the half, I believe.
Yep. Facility plan, we gave you details what rooms there are.
And that, that is largely a difference because of the number of portables. The portable, by definition, is a deficiency.
Oh.
So five of the 11 and a half are portables, and three of the nine are portables.
Thank you, that, okay. That's why the numbers didn't.
So it's pretty much a dead heat, as far as that's concerned. That's why that is, because when they do the plan, they assume if you're using a portable, that's not ideal.
Okay. That, that's helpful, because I was trying to understand.
Right.
The difference of the square footage. There was something else I was going to, the difference of the square footage. And I think I asked you this last time, talking about as the attendance is going, that they're doing much more building in the Mill Hill area. Have, has that been looked at by the people that are doing these stats?
Yes.
When the, yeah, when we had the company in to do the last long-range enrollment projections, they actually came to town, and they went to the building department, and they drove around, actually, as one of Tom's staff members took them around, and they saw the developments that were being taken place, and they looked at the developments in the Mill Hill area, and they looked at the developments in other parts of town.
They meet with the building department.
They may with the building department, looking at permits.
Realtors.
You know, probably the hardest thing, and so they, they did some estimating of, based on those houses, the size of the houses, the price of the houses, what would the, what they use a term, the yield be? They have a formula for that. So they baked that, they baked that into the numbers. The one that was hardest for them to do, I have to tell you, is Sherman, because of all what's going on at the beach, I don't think anybody's got any real confidence in what that's going to look like with all the turnover and the, what happened with the hurricane and so forth. That probably caused them more problems in predicting than Mill Hill did.
Thanks.
Other questions before we move off of Holland Hill and on to Mill Hill?
Anything. Anything.
So who wants to ask the next question? Mr. Fattabine, did you?
No.
No. Mr. Confortito?
Before we move off of Holland Hill? When, when, just for a point of clarification, I guess, either to Dr. Title or to Tom Cullen, my recollection, when I worked on this facilities task force a number of years ago, was 504 was essentially like a 94% or 92% of capacity?
Correct.
Okay. What is, do you remember that number, 90, I mean, a 504 can actually hold like 525 or 530?
526.
526?
Yep.
Okay.
Correct.
It's based on a formula, but it's not based on a formula of maxing out your class sizes.
Right.
Right. I think it's based on a 22 or something like that.
Correct.
Per classroom.
I think it's 21, right?
21 times 20.
21 per classroom.
Right. So that's what we, you know, average, but theoretically, you could put more kids in there.
Right.
Than that.
That's optimal, no, the 504 is optimal for that amount of classrooms.
Exactly.
Right.
Right. But you could put 520, 530 in there if the kids were distributed.
Appropriately.
Appropriately across the classrooms, which you can never guarantee, as you've seen in other circumstances.
I just knew that there was a, there was a.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's detailed out in the facility plan, too. Mr. Confortito, other questions on any particular topic on the long-range plan? Mrs. Lou McCormick.
So just so I understand how this, I just don't understand the capacity that we have available, that we're using as the basis for kind of what we need to build. So at Riverfield right now, we have, or we're going to have, or we do have an available capacity of 504 or 526? Is that, that was a 504 construction? Is that right?
That was a design for a 504 school.
So that has like up to 520 capacity, as we just said, right? And then, just so I understand, because I understand that Dwight and Burr are kind of, they have some excess capacity there, is that right? What is their capacity?
Burr's a 504 school.
So that's again, 520.
And Dwight, right now, is not a 504. The existing structure is probably in the 300 range.
378.
Yep. Thank you.
So, okay, so if I understand that, then Burr has an excess capacity of about 100, correct? And Dwight has an excess capacity of about 50, and Riverfield has an excess capacity of about 120, correct? So we have about 270 excess capacity within the district at other schools.
If you're looking at current.
District-wide, yeah.
You're looking at current enrollment.
Yes, correct. And the projection, I understand, is somewhat flattish on average across, probably slight increase, slight decrease, but I would say on average, this is approximately, right?
Yeah, I think if you look in the facility plan, we gave you the 10-year from MGT of America.
Right.
So you can see the ups and downs, the highs and lows.
Right. So even if it was 270, it might go down to, say, 250, or something like that. So, and so we are short now in Holland Hill. We're short what?
Well.
We're short about 30 seats, and with a projection, so that could be growing to about 50 seats, right, over time? I just want to understand this. So we're short. And at Mill Hill, we're just, we're not short, we're kind of, well, what are we at Mill Hill? Are we short?
Well, what I'm showing you, if you're looking at the third line down on this sheet.
Yeah.
I'm showing you where the highest enrollment year is.
Okay, so.
Year out of the 10-year plan.
So we're not short. Mill Hill, we actually have enough with the portables.
Not with the highest projected enrollment of 15, 16, being 405.
We're all right if you use the portables.
If we use the portables.
Right. So most, see, most of this is, is to replace the portables and get permanent structures in place, not necessarily to increase the capacity of the current building, as well as improve the deteriorating infrastructure in these schools. So it's not necessarily the case that at the end of the day, depending on what we do at, say, a Mill Hill, that you're going to be adding very many additional, like, new classrooms, but you've got five portables that need to be removed and replaced and attached to the building. And the same thing at, at Holland Hill, although Holland Hill has an actual need for additional classrooms. So that, that's the, that's the difference. It's, it looks like there's more room in there than there is, because you're counting the portables, which we're using.
As.
But in the long term, the district's made a commitment to obliterating portables.
Right. So the total room deficiencies, I just want to understand that. So when you say room deficiencies of 11 and a half, five of which are the portables, the other six and a half are just other rooms that would be nice to have, but were not in dire need, or how are we defining deficiency? Like, is it?
That's right here. That's in here.
There's a methodology in the book that explains how they do it, but basically, when you have a staff that are sharing a space that shouldn't be, that would be a deficiency.
So it's to be able to allocate everything, so that everything neatly has its own particular space, that's.
A prime example would be the one classroom that's divided up into four.
Right. We would ideally have four classrooms for that.
Well, you might have four, or.
One of the spaces.
Spaces, right. And, you know, it is okay to have some sharing, depending if they're people that aren't there every day, but if you've got, you know, three people that are there every single day, then they, they might need, say, and they're, say they're specialists, so they're seeing small groups of kids, that might count as a half a deficiency, because they need like a half-size classroom. They don't all need a full classroom. And so the company goes through a formula, and they'll say, okay, they'll look at those four and say, you know, those four, that's a deficiency of two, because every one of those should have the equivalent of a half a classroom. So you've got deficiencies where people are working in substandard spaces in addition to the classroom deficiencies.
So what's going to happen, just so I understand, at Holland Hill is that, given the increase in the population, their deficiencies are going to go up then to meet the deficiencies at Mill Hill?
They're going to get worse before they get better.
I'm saying, so right now, Mill Hill's deficiencies are actually worse than Holland Hill. They've already hit that capacity of having a lot of deficiencies, and Holland Hill is following suit, and after this year, their nine deficiencies-
Yes.
-could move to eleven, and then they will be as bad as Mill Hill is.
Right.
Correct.
And again, you have to take the portables out of the picture and just look at the usable spaces. They're actually about, right now, you know, technically about the same, but next year and the year out years, they're going to, they're going to go past them.
Right, but I'm just saying, like, that's kind of the projection. Right now, they're a little bit better on the deficiencies front than Mill Hill, but in another year or so-
They're going to be worse.
-they're going to match them, and then beyond that, they could exceed. But Mill Hill's clearly not in good shape right now, they're in a worse condition.
That's why they're both on here, I mean, they both need work. I mean, we're not saying that both schools don't have deficiencies and need to be upgraded.
No, I understand, but one of the questions is the timing of the waterfall also.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
And then, I guess my other question is, comes back to this consideration for, we have two hundred and fifty, you know, of unused capacity within this district. We're short at Holland Hill and Mill Hill of some space, so, you know, that's the only thing that puzzles me when I consider, when I consider this waterfall and the allocation of funds and how, how we're spending. And I guess I need to think about that some more, but I think those, those numbers make me think, rather than just saying, oh, obviously, we need to build more, when it seems like we have built. So I'm just wondering how we use it best.
Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, well, I, one thing that's always important to keep in mind, you know, and this has been discussed ad nauseam with all the different facilities discussions and subcommittees and whatnot, is the whole idea of the core capacity of a building. I mean, yes, you can have more than five hundred and four students in a school, but you, then you have to consider the APR, you have to consider lunch, you have to consider just myriad other classrooms. So yes, even though you can put twenty-five children in a classroom, if you fill every single classroom to capacity and have over five oh-four, there are other drawbacks to it. I mean, it's doable, Osborne Hill's been doing it for years, but it's not ideal, because at Osborne Hill, you have students receiving services in what was, used to be the art supply closet, you have lots of different problems that arise, even though, yes, schools can have more than five oh-four, it's certainly possible and doable, but to put too many in over too long a period of time, especially depending on how the classes work out, it, it ends up not being ideal as well. So that's just something else to keep in mind.
We have other topics that Dr. Title wanted to address, but are we finished with discussions on these three schools, or do we have other questions on these three schools?
No, no, we're not.
Mr. Fattabean, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, and then Mr. Conventito.
Is anyone from Mill Hill, such as the principal, here to give a sort of indication as what the deficiencies of Mill Hill are, are as well?
He'll be here in ten minutes.
All right, so is the intent of the chair to hear from the representative from Mill Hill to advocate, to indicate what the deficiencies are?
Certainly, yeah. All right.
I think Laura wanted to come back up and say something.
We have a PTA president here also.
Certainly, even though we move off of the schools, when the principal gets here, we can go back to the schools.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure, you indicated that, were we done with all the schools, and that was my concern, I didn't think they were.
No, no.
Hey, Mrs. Grutal wanted to say something.
Wait a second, Conventito. So that was your question, you didn't have another question on, related to that. So, the principal wishes to make a comment.
Yes, so the deficiencies that were posted in that book were dated December fourteenth, two thousand and ten. That was when Holland Hill currently had eighteen sections. So presently, we're at twenty, with the possibility of twenty-one sections next year.
So how does that change numbers in terms of deficiencies?
So, I don't know the exact formula that was done for the deficiencies, but in my calculation, that would increase us by two.
So, to eleven.
And then, after the budget passes through the town body, adding the extra special ed teacher, would that increase us again?
Thank you, Laura.
That might be where you get the half. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, was that the question, or do you have another question?
No, I had one other question for right now, and this is getting to Mrs. Lou McCormick's question, and something that Mr. Llewellyn has also raised, I'm not trying to speak for him, but he's raised this, so I'm thinking that, wondering if there's another budget number that you're interested in getting. Are you talking about then, for Mill Hill, if we're talking about all of these empty seats, are you talking about then that if this didn't need, it's one thing to get rid of the portables, that's not to say that you have to add classrooms, and that if students were moved to those empty seats, then we're talking about a whole different number needed here of a core facilities upgrade only, am I correct?
Right, I'm fully in support of renovating, I definitely think-
Oh, absolutely.
-these buildings need renovation, that's clear. The question is, is do we actually need to be building for capacity? I think it's a different way that we invest our money, right? Can we, do we have capacity with the district if we reallocate? It's always the question of allocation. Can we reallocate and then focus the money on really renovating the schools or investing in other stuff? So that's what I grapple with, and even as Mrs. Gerber pointed out, even if we change those five twenties back to five oh-fours and take away twenty seats from each of Burr and Riverfield, we generously would move the two fifty down to two hundred extra seats, but that's still excess capacity of two hundred seats, and how much does it cost to build all this excess capacity again at these two schools if we aren't going, if we don't need it, when we could be focusing it on other stuff that would make the learning even better and use the capacity that's available already? And that's what I struggle with, I'm not really sure what the right answer is, but I think it's something that we need to continue to think about.
Right, so through the chair to Mrs. Lou McCormick, my question then is that, is there another budget number that continues this conversation? That if, and that's what I'm trying, because I'm hoping-
Need a new waterfall number.
Say it again?
If we had got a new waterfall number.
Right, and that number would be based on what calculation?
Right, so let's assume that we were able to creatively figure out a way to deal with the excess capacity issue-
Right.
-right? And we did not need to expand the Mill Hill and Holland Hill for capacity, right? We only were doing renovations of the core facilities. What would those numbers be?
Well-
Which no one expects.
We'd also have to look at what the existing building capacity is. So Holland Hill's existing building capacity from nineteen fifty-six is three hundred and fifteen students. So that doesn't include the portables.
You'd also have to get a redistricting plan in place, which will take at least ten years. Because that's what you're talking about, you'd have to move families. So you'd have to say, we don't have room at Mill Hill, we're sending you to Burr.
I don't think we want to say anything right now, I think we want, what we want to do-
That's the clear implication, I just want it, explicated.
I want to, we want to explore and, and understand what the cost implications are. And, and so what would the cost be if we didn't have to expand for capacity reasons? And then we would assume that if we did have to expand for some capacity but not as much, we could, it would be some number in between.
Right.
Right?
And before I move to Mr., before I move to Mr. Conventito, one of the questions that I think we have to ask ourselves, whether we use the term reallocate or redistrict or whatever, if really we do not, as a board, want to go down a certain path, how much staff time should be spent exploring all those alternatives? Shouldn't we give the staff more direction as to what we are interested in doing so they can research the information that will relate to what the board has an interest in, in doing? So that's just a rhetorical question more than anything else.
And if I could add another rhetorical, I find it difficult to decide as a board whether we would move towards a redistricting without actually looking at the numbers, because if the numbers aren't significant, then we would never consider such a tremendous exercise. But if the numbers are significant, maybe we try to get more creative and understanding the pitfalls and the concerns of the past, we see if we can't come up with ideas, and perhaps we can't. But I don't think we know whether we delve into this or not until we see the numbers. And I don't think they should be that tremendous for two schools, I hope they wouldn't be, but, you know, I'll leave that for you to respond.
Mr. Conventito.
Yeah. I want to make sure we're comparing apples to oranges here. You have Sherman listed as a five oh-four, which would say twenty-four classrooms. When I count the classrooms, I see twenty-four, but I see one being used as art and one as special ed. Would that not reduce that to a four sixty-two? Assuming, because the strings and bands portable, when we renovated that building, we said we're going to leave, let it sit there until it literally falls off of it, this foundation, okay?
Mrs. Roxy, do you want to come up?
But would not be counted in, in the enrollment numbers, or the capacity numbers.
She came out, she needs a chance to shine.
Please introduce yourself.
John and I sat at many meetings about this project.
So if you could introduce yourself for the TV audience.
I'm sorry, Eileen Roxy, Principal Roger Sherman. Yes, we, we are not counting the portable as a classroom space. That was, that was highly discussed back when we were doing the initial renovation, and so it's not counted as a classroom. We do have a classroom right now that's being used as a special ed room and OTPT, because we had the same issue as Holland Hill, where we were delivering services in the hall, and so we designated a classroom for that. Currently, we have twenty-two sections, we're slated for twenty-three for next year, and we have been at twenty-four in the past with art in the cart. So, right now, we have enough space to go forward.
Okay, so through the chair, assuming that you need rooms eighteen and nineteen for special ed, OTPT, and art-
Mm-hmm.
-then the proper classification of this building would then be a twenty-two classroom building, is that correct?
Right, yes, that, that's what we ended up with at the, at the, when the renovation was.
So it would be a four sixty-two, not a five oh-four.
Right.
I just want to make sure that we're, we're doing apples to apples here.
Yep.
Because I distinctly remember that, that issue, even though, I know we created space in phase two when we did the front office addition, but it wasn't adequate to-
Right, we, those were like half classrooms because they were smaller, they were office space, not classrooms.
And we finally got rid of that. Actually, I think the I-hook is still sitting outside the gymnasium, isn't it? Just as a, just as a reminder-
It is.
-of what we came from.
Oh, where we had to service children, yes, it's still there.
And, and my question is, in the three million dollars, and I guess this is through the chair, either to, to Mr. Cullen or Dr. Title, does that include attaching to the annex to the building?
Yes, yes, it does.
Yes.
It does, okay.
I think we need to look at that potentially, depending on where it ends up falling on the waterfall.
Right.
We may want to separate that out as a small project to do, if it's going to take longer to get the rest of Sherman done than we anticipate.
Okay, and I guess, through the chair to Ms. Lou McCormick, I am not opposed to looking, and I'm, I'm sure Dr. Title's going to fall off his chair when I say this, looking at redistricting, knowing we do have excess capacity around there, and I have no problem, and it will not be an easy task, and, you know, bulletproof shields up and, and where, but I, I think we owe it to the consignors, we look at all of the options before we recommend, you know, close to thirty million dollars' worth of renovations in addition, so I am more than happy to take up a redistricting issue to look at that.
Sounds like we have a subcommittee getting ready to be formed. Lou McCormick, Mr. Conventito, we need a third person, and-
And, and I think that, that, that comes with a obligation to remain on the board until you have completed the task.
Generally, not my, uh, virtue.
May I suggest, I'm sorry, Mr. Patton?
I, I just wanted to quickly, he spoke what I was thinking, and I was like, I cannot believe I'm about to say this, and then you just said it. I said for the last, you know, two years, I don't want to go anywhere near the R-word again, but if it really is an issue, and we don't know certainly, you know, what the town's feelings are yet, you know, one project is always tough enough to push through, but two, and only a few years apart, is going to be even tougher. If the R-word has to be revisited, at least in the short term, I mean, there's never a short term, but, I mean, if it has to, I don't want to see art in a, art in a cart, and I don't want to see four teachers, even if they're specialists, stuffed in a classroom. So if there's another way in the next two years, I guess I'm your third member of your subcommittee.
And, and so-
If I could just follow up on that, and I say that comment with a caveat, knowing that both Holland Hill and Mill Hill need core facilities improvements.
And I agree.
And we cannot just look the other way on those. You know, I would look at redistricting to minimize the overall cost of those construction costs.
So the news story can include those three board members' phone numbers and emails. Can I suggest that we move on to the other issues, and then when the principal for Mill Hill gets here, we can loop back to finish the conversation on those three schools? Is that acceptable to the board? Dr. Title, you had some other things you wanted to highlight?
Yeah, I just want to sort of outline some of the changes we have to make, that we know we already have to make to the waterfall, and that when this comes back to you, you know, once I got, we've been sort of working off two documents, I mean, I'm, don't know, I have a sense of the board, I sort of had a sense at the last meeting that you wanted to move in the direction of a Holland Hill first, but I don't have that for sure, so I'd like to work off one document going forward, and I'd like to bring you back, it's kind of a new, a new waterfall chart. So here are some of the things we need to do, and Mr. Cullen and I kept a list. So one of the things, for example, is, we know that Fairfield Ludlow High School is going to need an additional appropriation to finish off their windows, so we're going to need to include that in the proper year with an estimate for what that cost is, so that's not currently in our waterfall. We also know that the town is considering splitting up the security infrastructure into two pieces. It doesn't change the bottom line very much, but it is going to change a little bit about where the money is spent in which year or so. That's a minor change, we'll make that correction as well. We also need to look at a couple other pieces in here. We think that perhaps the Ward High School Athletic Artificial Tur Field may not need to be done in sixteen, seventeen, something else may end up taking its place. So we, that, we're going to look at that and explore that a little bit more carefully. That looks like it's got a little more useful life to it than the one at Ludlow, which really needs to go. And then, we also have to consider if we end up putting, pushing Sherman back a year or two, rather than waiting for the full renovation and the FEMA cap, of looking potentially at maybe a capital non-recurring project to attach the Sherman, you know, attach Sherman to the building. So we'll need to look at that, we're going to do some research on that, similar to what we're looking at at Osborne Hill, because the town really seems interested in having a better walkway between the annex at Osborne Hill and the building, and if, and if that's the standard, then we want to look at, well, would something similar be at Sherman? And if we wait till this project goes through, that may take a longer, longer time. So we're going to take, take a look at, take a look at that as well. And then what we're, I think, certainly can, at least initially, given the, the previous discussion, work with the lower numbers for Holland Hill and Mill Hill in terms of not building them out at five oh-four at least, have those in as placeholders. And once we have that, and, and you've at least taken a look at it, then we need to take it to the town, and they need to run it by bond counsel, not bond counsel, we don't need to hear more from, sorry.
No comment.
No comment, catching my tongue. It's not the bond counsel that does this, it's the folks that project the debt repayment for the town, that group, the actuaries, they're not actuaries, whatever they are. They're, they're people that help the town figure out what the debt will be going forward, and we need to slot these in with what the other projects are going on in town, because remember, there's a whole town side to this, that they make requests for capital projects, and it doesn't work well if we're putting a big number in and they're putting a big number in in the same year. So, once you get the general lay of the land, before you vote to approve anything, I want to take it over to the town, have them run the numbers, and come back and say, you know what, you really got to do something. You know, this year's really too high, this year looks like it's got some space, so then when we bring it, bring something back to you to vote on, it's something that we know will work well with the town. That's sort of, this is going to take a while, we've always anticipated this would take us a while, so not something we're going to finish in a meeting or two, I just want to keep getting a sense of where the board wants to go on this, what, what the priorities are. We'll update figures as we move along, and then we will, you know, bring it back to you with one waterfall proposed. If it looks generally acceptable to you, then we'll take it over to the town and let them do their thing with it. That, that's sort of how I see this thing playing out over the next few months.
Questions on any of the comments that Dr. Title made, Mrs. Carnell?
I just want to understand something, in the handout on the facilities plan, Dr. Title?
Mm-hmm.
If we look at this, and I'm following the ten-year out-
Yep.
-it looks like fifteen, sixteen is really where they have the most explosion, and then we start to trend down a bit. So, I don't believe in Band-Aid fixes, but if we're talking about, maybe there's something that can be done to help the space issue, as opposed to, you know, asking the town for a lot of money.
Well, there's not that much you can do in the short term, you know, that's, that's Well, there's not that much you can do in the short term. That's the issue.
Portable.
So... The portables were the short-term issue, which have turned out to be unfortunately a long-term issue. Now, we've made tremendous progress with that. What do we use to have top?
Yeah, in 2002, we had 61 portables in the district.
And now we're down to...
Fifteen.
Fifteen. So that's, you know, we're making progress, but the wheels of finance grind slowly. So, yeah, we, you know, we work. Again, schools have gone through some periods of overcrowding for several years while they wait for these renovations to happen. I mean, if you look at the Osborne Hill, Lake Riverfield, those communities waited a long time for their place in line. And unfortunately, that's what we have. So we work on it, but it's not like we can say, take... These portables really can't be... They're not really portable. That's really a misnomer. They're temporary.
They're meant for 10 years.
Yeah. And they're...
I'm afraid to ask how many years it's been.
Well, that actually is in the book. We actually have the documentation on every portable and what year. This is a handy sort of reference guide, so, you know, we have one of the portables at Holland Hill was purchased in 2000, as an example.
Neither is the turf.
You know, and I would also say that the listed capacity at some of the schools may appear that there's a classroom or two empty, but there's other deficiencies in those schools that we have to address. So it's not... There's not necessarily as much space as people think there might be. And the schools that really are still pretty well jammed up are the ones closest in geographic location to Holland Hill. That's the least available spot. That side of town has just been growing. So all the schools that were listed before are really more on the western front as we look at it. So...
But I think you made a good point, that it takes so long to get this.
It does.
That by the time we're getting to it, we look like we're trending down next year.
Right. So we definitely don't want to overbuild, but at the same time, you're going to have one shot to do this. And, you know, enrollments go up and enrollments go down, and there's definitely a cycle to it. There was a time in this town where they thought they didn't need all the elementary schools, and they closed a bunch. And now most of them are open again. So on the one hand, you don't want to be, you don't want to overbuild, because then they're not using efficient use of resources. On the other hand, you have to leave yourself a little headroom, because you just don't know, and you're going to get one chance at this. You're not going to, you know, renovate a Mill Hill or renovate a Holland Hill, and then seven years later go say, oops, we should have added another wing. That just doesn't fly around here. So that's the balance we're trying to achieve.
Anything else, Ms. Carnell? Any other board members have questions on the topics that Dr. Tidal just brought to our attention? I think we are, but I think we were waiting for the Mill Hill principal to come and make whatever comments.
Yeah, we have the deficiency totals. If you want to know what the deficiencies are at Mill Hill, we have the list.
I'd rather hear from the Mill Hill principal.
She can come up as the public, right?
So may I suggest this, that we will go to comments from the public, and perhaps somebody can reach out to the travel time and determine when we may be expecting our staff person from Mill Hill. So please come forward, state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Krista Neerman, 260 Acord Lane. Ooh, I'm nervous. I haven't spoken here before. So I just wanted to point some things out on the map about Mill Hill. Classroom 17, I wish Mr. Chase had driven, had drawn a beautiful four-square in there as well, because you'll see that is our math-science teacher and our language arts specialist, more than one, all in that one room. So I think in Holland Hill, the language arts specialist, the math-science teacher, and special ed are in one room, and I know that was a big concern. We've got the same thing at Mill Hill. And I just want to... Room 17.
Yeah, room 17.
Room 17, it just says MST slash LAS, so that's more than one language arts specialist and the math-science teacher. And again, we have bookcases sort of trying to partition the room, but they are all sharing that room. And obviously, I want to point out what has already been said, which is the portables were supposed to be a temporary solution. And I really think that needs to take precedence when you're deciding which school is going to get renovated next. We've got the entire fifth grade, four fifth-grade classrooms out in those portables. We've done so much to increase safety in our schools, and yet the entire fifth grade, four classes are out there. And I don't also think that it's not fair, because we have more portables, that our renovation will be pushed off, because technically, we can house these students. I think the board should make it a top priority to get rid of these portables absolutely as soon as possible. And if some specialty teachers have to share rooms or have to switch around, I think the public's going to be okay with that, if we're getting rid of more portables. You said there's 15 portables left, so Mill Hill has one-third of all the portables out of 16 schools. We've got one-third of all the portables, and that's not okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other comments from the public on the long-range facilities plan?
It's to address something that came up during your discussion?
Something other than Holland Hill.
Well, it's to address something related to a question that came up. I will mention what it is.
So, as you know, we've said that you get one shot at the apple. We're experimenting...
I understand.
Let me finish my sentence.
Sorry.
We're experimenting with how this can be managed, if you will. So make your comment, and we'll learn over time whether we have to find a better way of doing this.
This was just to answer the question. Somebody brought up, perhaps, why the increase in enrollment in Holland Hill. And as someone from the neighborhood who's lived there quite a long time, longer than prior to having children, we have far more air available rentals. And quite frankly, to be quite honest, our taxes in the Holland Hill district are lower than other parts of town, which makes it an attractive, more affordable area to live in. So even though we don't have a large construction boom, there are more rentals, there are more homes going up for sale, and I just wanted to clarify that. So point of clarification, that's all.
Please come forward and state your name and address.
Tricia Donovan, Fairfield resident. My children have graduated out of Mill Hill, and I know one thing that we talked about when my children were there was, even if the construction process goes through, we've had scraped walls in the APR, scraped free of paint, and it looks disgusting. And it's been that way for years. And parents have volunteered to go in and paint it. And I know that that's been an ongoing discussion for years and years. I was just wondering, in the interim, are there ways that the community can help spruce it up? Because I was looking at the school climate survey results, and when you looked at, is your school well-maintained? That answer was not very good at Mill Hill.
Thank you very much. Other comments from the public? The public should recognize that we're trying to stretch time here for somebody to arrive.
No.
But nonetheless, back to the board.
I think we just have to move on.
Back to the board.
I mean, let's just move on. Just move on if he's not here. Tom Cullen's here.
Tom Cullen's right there.
Yeah, he's right there.
Did you have a question for Tom Cullen?
Yeah, I have a question for Tom. As far as use of these facilities after school, I mean, my recollection, when my kids were younger, that Mill Hill was used extensively by park and rec for basketball and so forth. Is Holland Hill in the same situation, or is it more one school?
No, it's in the same. I mean, the schools are heavily used.
Okay. So there's no real differential between those two?
No.
All right.
Mrs. Lou McCormick?
So currently, in the waterfall, Mill Hill is in front of Holland Hill, technically. That's the current order.
Well, we provided you two options, an A and a B, so...
Well, it was before.
Correct.
It was first in line and then Holland Hill. So really, the discussion has been, should we move Holland Hill up in front of Mill Hill, when Mill Hill was designated first originally?
I wouldn't say that that's exactly accurate.
It wasn't.
The last board-approved long-range plan
Yeah.
has Holland Hill being the next major renovation for a school. That's the last board-approved long-range plan.
The one before that, my understanding was that Mill Hill was first.
No, no.
It wasn't.
The last approved board plan has Holland Hill first and Mill Hill second. As we go through individual projects, the staff of the school district is required to show alternative waterfall plans that support that there are alternatives that allow a Fairfield-Ludlow High School project to go forward, or an Osborne-Hill School project to go forward. And so the staff did produce an alternative that showed that it could move forward, which included Holland Hill going first and Mill Hill second. I mean, Mill Hill first and Holland Hill second.
So part of the last...
Let me finish. Let me finish. That was only a staff exercise to allow the finance department to say, yes, there's an alternative, which then allowed them to say yes to Osborne-Hill School and Fairfield-Ludlow High School projects. It was not intended to change the board's last official vote. It was simply a math exercise to move the other two projects forward. And then in the last discussion we had on this topic, the board asked the staff to produce two different alternatives, a Plan A and a Plan B, that essentially moved one project forward versus the other.
Okay, so there was no movement between moving Mill Hill back in line. For some reason, I was under the impression that Mill Hill had been earlier in the waterfall two sessions ago. And perhaps we moved it in the last session, which I don't recall, but you're telling me that it was always Holland Hill first in the waterfall?
The board-approved plan was always Holland Hill and remains Holland Hill. The staff went through a math exercise where they switched those two around, because it was a...
An easy fix.
Quick fix to allow those two projects I mentioned to be approved by the town. And I'll take this opportunity, thank you for bringing this up. As soon as we vote this plan, and we have a waterfall chart that is accepted to the town, probably within three to four months, that waterfall chart will have to be moved a little bit here and a little bit there to constantly stay ahead of new projects that we're aware of or cost differences. So this is an iterative plan that is constantly moving. And as you might have heard me at the Board of Finance and whatnot, we have made a commitment, a prior Board of Education made a commitment, that once we approve a waterfall chart, a long-range facilities plan that produces a waterfall chart that balances with the town's principal and interest payments being spread out, that as we move projects around, we will make it a revenue-neutral, or I'll say, an expense-neutral chart, that if we have to move something earlier, we'll move something back later so that we can stay on track with the last-approved plan. Other questions or comments at the moment? We do need to give the staff some direction on the A or the B alternative, so that they can come back to us with a waterfall chart and a facilities plan that is based on one concept or another. Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli?
A comment and a question. Through the chair to Ms. Lou McCormick. I think maybe one way to capture what Mr. Dreyer was just saying is that the first time the Board of Education has ever seen a plan that listed Mill Hill first, and I'm not saying that a discussion won't decide then that it's warranted that that be the new permanent change, but the first time this board has ever seen a plan with Mill Hill first was that waterfall schedule we saw last fall. Prior to that, every plan that's ever come before this board involved Holland Hill as the next priority. So, which is obviously unfortunate, because that's the first one that you're seeing, so you're thinking that is the history.
That was the first one that I saw.
Right. And in fact, all prior history always had Holland Hill as the first one before this, before the Board of Education. But that said, my one question, I don't know, Mr. Dreyer, if you're the one to answer it, but considering that I think we do need other numbers to decide how that they can possibly fit in on the schedule, and given what Dr. Tidal has said in terms of all of these other numbers now to be added, what is our timeframe from here in terms of additional discussion and voting to move this forward, knowing that it then quickly can need to be changed? But if we're looking at needing different building numbers for Holland Hill and Mill Hill regarding...
Yeah, our plan this year was to bring this before the board for two or three meetings for discussion, and sometime toward the end of this school year, May or June meeting, have a vote that says this is now the updated long-range plan. We want to get it right, you know. Ms. Carnell?
Can you just explain the timeframe? Let's say by the end of the school year, we do vote, come to an agreement. What would be the timeframe for the first project and the timeframe for the second project?
Yeah, the waterfall chart that you see, once Dr. Tidal and Mr. Cullen look at the question of Holland Hill versus Mill Hill, the Fairfield-Ludlow High School extra money, the security, the turf field, the capital nonreoccurring for security, and the lower numbers for Holland Hill and Mill Hill, once they look at all of those numbers, they take the projects and move it from one year to another until they get it balanced out. So you won't know exactly where they are until they bring that back for our next look.
So it could still be a while?
A month, maybe?
Yeah, I would say it takes us about three to four weeks to do the waterfall schedule revisions, and then we share them with the chief financial officer of the town.
So this could be coming back, maybe as a superintendent's report, updated at the end of March, and maybe it'd be back on our agenda the beginning of April to say, here's where the next iteration is.
Right. And then let's just say one passes. How long does it take till they start the renovation? You know, what is the timeframe? That's what I...
How long did Riverfield wait to get from the beginning to the end?
Riverfield request to the first selectman was March 12, 2012.
It's the same decade.
So...
That answers that question.
Yeah, correct. So we have the principal of Mill Hill here? Has he caught his breath?
All right, Mr. Chase, come on up.
So, Mr. Chase, come on forward. Some board members want to ask a question of you, or first, I should, I'll give you an opportunity to make any comments that you want about the school, and then we'll go to Q and A.
Well, I apologize. I was locked out downstairs, too, when I arrived late.
Security!
That's not being late. I was locked out, so I... Okay, so I'm not sure what the questions were.
No, we had not asked them yet, but if you wanted to make any comments, then feel free to. But if not, we'll just go to Q and A from the board.
Maybe you can describe, because one of the parents talked about Classroom 17. Can you describe how that's being used, who's in there, the MST-LAS room?
It's split exactly, pretty much down the middle. If you're looking at the map from the front entrance, there would be a vertical line down the middle, and it would be split between MST and LAS. Our other LAS is housed in the library in a small office out there.
So there's two people in that room?
There are two people in that room, and that is where they do their intervention as well.
Right.
So oftentimes, they're competing for time and space, obviously, and in terms of small group intervention, it's not the best of scenarios when you're working with small groups.
And then tell us about the, all the areas around the gym. You've got risers, custodial supplies, band orchestra supplies, chairs, tables. Is there actual instruction going on on the stage in there? Because I see APE, OTPT as well. Can you sort of describe the gym and the stage and all how that's all used during the day?
Sure. Upon, just upon my arrival, there's always been a shortage of space storage, instructional. The space off to the right of the gymnasium is used currently for, well, just as you can see, there are all various kinds of storage, which limits the amount of storage, for example, that we have for any extra desks or anything like that that come and go. This is regular items for storage. OTPT is instructional on the stage, which is not ideal, of course, and potentially dangerous, but really, we have no other location for them. And it's really dependent upon the number of students as to what space we choose. We've always been functioning with, again, during my tenure, with at least five portables. So in terms of just bricks and mortar, as it's often referred to, it's a very tight space. We have declined in enrollment since my arrival, but I will say that even still, I think we're currently at 414. Even still, it, right now, we feel the impact, I would say, less instructionally and more storage. Storage space has always been an issue, and even where we are with the five portables, where we feel like we're at the max instructionally.
Questions from board members? Mr. Confortito, since Mr. Fattabene has been the longest-serving board member that's advocated for Mill Hill, do you want to go first, or Mr. Confortito? Mr. Confortito, and then Ms. Carnell?
Through the chair, as long as we're looking at the schematic. I'm looking at on the far right next to the gymnasium, I guess it's room 177. the far right next to the gymnasium, I guess it's Room 177, Special Ed. Is that actually a classroom, or is that a converted storage area?
It was not converted during my tenure, so as far as I know, it's always been a room.
Yeah, it's been a classroom.
It's always been a, it's just a strange configuration that I'm looking at, hanging off the side of the building there.
I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't call it a classroom. It's, it's office size, you know, it's not, it certainly can't house more than half a dozen students at a time. And it is, you know, when I look at that, it's, it does seem somewhat off-scale when you look at it in comparison to the gymnasium.
With the projected enrollment next year, do you anticipate losing a section, or are we going to stay the same?
Projected enrollment has us at the same number of classrooms.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Carnell.
Hi, how are you?
I'm all right, how are you?
The all-purpose room? What is that? I was trying to figure it out.
It's funny you ask. We were just having our math night tonight, and one, and someone said, what is APR? The all-purpose room, it's termed that because we use it for the cafeteria. We use it for small assemblies. If we're able to segment our assemblies K235, we use, because the stage is there, we use it for that. So, you know, as it, as it would indicate, it's used for a variety of purposes. It's tight for, for, it's a very small all-purpose room for the cafeteria use on a regular basis, and the kitchen itself is, Tom could correct me on this, but I think it might be the smallest in the elementary.
One of the smallest elementary school kitchens, and it only has one serving line.
No, I thought it was the cafeteria, that's why.
Yeah.
Right. Most people look at that and say, that's the cafeteria. We have a different nomenclature. Hey.
I don't, the other thing I want to point out, one of the items that we look at in the, that could be a deficiency or not, is, one of the standards is, is there a separate space for computers? Is there a computer room? So you'll notice, just as one of the differences, and I want to make sure, Laura, I'm reading yours correctly, that, Mr. Chase, if you look at yours floor plan, that Classroom 10 is a dedicated computer room.
Not
Or is it not? It's what it says here. The other one that said computer room, I know that's your conference room, what is in Classroom 10?
So currently, we have the fold-out, plastic fold-out tables there, and we have laptops in there. We're using it as a computer lab because we did go down in enrollment, and we had an open space, so we chose to put the laptops in there from the laptop carts, but it is not fully functional as a computer room. The data lines aren't there or anything like that, so it's, it's, at this point, an empty space that we chose to put the laptops in and attempt to use as a computer room.
Right, and that's always, that's one of those becomes casualties of enrollment. So if you, I think if I've got, if I'm looking at the Holland Hill one, there is no computer room in Holland Hill, they're in the media, they're carved out of the library, right?
Right.
Correct.
Right? They've got laptops on a cart. And I mean, they're not the only school that has that. Jennings has the same thing, Sherman has the same thing, so we'll have a lot of schools that have a deficiency because we don't have a, a computer room, but in this case, you know, technically, there is one, but you never know when you're going to need that for a classroom, so we, we hate to wire up something, get it all ready.
Right.
Make it permanent, and then have to rip it all out the next year. So it kind of gets used when we have the space, and if we don't have the space, that becomes a classroom.
Yeah, again, I just wanted to be as accurate as possible when reporting to the board, that currently, we're using it for the computer room, but obviously, it, it's prioritized as a classroom if, if need to be.
Yep.
And we do still have desktops in the library, because the desktops themselves are not wireless, and the only way we were able to use the laptops in that room is because they're wireless.
Other questions for Mr. Chase or others? Mr. Patton.
Going back to that, that computer room, would there be a reason? Obviously, you wouldn't do it, you know, this year, but, you know, instead of having it as a random computer room for laptop uses and whatnot, to take, like, the grade-five classroom that's in the portables outside and move that inside? And, you know, have, I, I, you know, if you certainly put laptops in a portable outside, that might cause more issues in terms of moving kids around in security, but at least that would, you know, that would get a permanent grade. If that's an actual classroom that's regular-sized, why wouldn't you want to put a grade in there, especially, you know, you've got three fifth-grade classrooms in portables together, and you've got this straggler next to the strings and band one there?
So it's kind of, it's, it's a, it's one of those deals where it's somewhat of a roll of the dice, because you have to, you have to try and predict what the next year will be. So if I look at the numbers this year, as I did last year, excuse me, it didn't seem appropriate to move a classroom for just one year. We were going down a section of fifth grade this coming year, so we would be just housed in those three portables. It would make sense to just maintain that classroom that was in, rather than move a teacher out just for one year, to, to leave her there for that one year that remains for fifth grade, because we weren't going to have the numbers for four sections of fifth grade anyway coming next year.
You're talking 2015, 16?
Correct.
Okay. And the other question is that the, the room that Dr. Tittle mentioned before, that's now designated the conference room, is that like the staff office conference room?
Conference room's used for any grade-level meetings, instructional data team meetings, PPT meetings, things like that. If that's, you're referring to adjacent to the kindergarten classrooms?
Correct.
Yeah, that's what they're, it's a space, very narrow, small space, it's used for that purpose. In the past, when we were upwards of 475 students, it was used as a special education resource room.
Okay, so it's obviously not full-sized for, to be, to be any kind of classroom?
No.
Like that, or?
No.
So, okay, and there's no other conference room in the office area, at least that I could see, right, where you're?
Correct.
So the principal, whatever, like, wants staff meetings, whatever, that's the room that you would, you would use for that sort of thing as well?
Staff meetings, we use the library. Any kind of smaller meeting would be in the conference room. That conference room at most houses, I think, we've felt kind of crunched when we had a PPT of maybe 16 people, and it was very, very tight.
Okay.
Other questions from board members, or comments from board members? Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli.
I was just hoping you could help us, I mean, I think we're kind of piecing, we're the, we use, keep using the phrase deficiencies, and so where, are there deficiencies that we're perhaps not seeing? Your PTA representative pointed out Classroom 17, clearly seeing that OT and PT on the stage, that would be a deficiency. I'm not quite clear on what it is that's happening in the gymnasium for those, and I was wondering, so I was hoping you could explain the gym, and then is there something else in here that truly is in a space where it doesn't belong? I mean, I recognize many, many of these professionals can do their work in smaller offices, but on the other hand, something might be completely inappropriate, and we can't tell by looking at this.
It's a good question. I'm not sure what your question is about PE, but I can address that last question about
In the gym, in the, way up in the top right corner, handwritten, some OTPT taught here.
Oh, okay, thank you. Oftentimes, they do share space, it depends, and that's mostly APE that is taught there. Sometimes OTPT joins in, but mostly APE, which is adaptive physical education.
Okay.
And, and they're forced to share space during a class, when a class has that space for PE. Does that explain that?
It does, but where else would it be?
Where else? So is an individual student from a different class?
Right, but we don't have private gymnasiums, so that, pardon my ignorance, I'm, I'm not clear where else, that, that it's pointed out like this makes it look like a deficiency, so I'm just trying to understand it better. Is there another place that would normally, that it would be in another 504 school, which you might not be able to speak to? I don't know.
You know, I, yeah, I guess I wouldn't be able to speak to that. I wouldn't know where they might store that. I was just pointing out that it is shared space, and it's shared space not even within the same grade, grade level oftentimes. It's, it's
You'd want, you'd want to have, you know, in, in the model, say, a half-size OTPT room that was specifically designed for those students, it might have specialized equipment in it.
That's correct.
Mats, swings, this sort of thing, potentially for the OT and the PT, and APE is often done in a, you know, gymnasium, but obviously, if you can do it when they're in there, when there's not another class.
Right.
That's a big problem.
Done on the hallways, they're done on the stages, some do them in the gyms.
Andrea, do you want to say anything about that, or?
I think you covered it.
I covered it. That's, that's a deficiency. If you're teaching it on the stage, that's a deficiency, right?
Right.
Which we've also got. That's what he also originally was pointing out, that it, where the stage is, I, I misspoke at where the stage is, I had talked about storage.
Right, right.
But the stage is over by the APR, the cafeteria, and that's where some OTPT takes place as well, so that's clearly a deficiency in here. And then, you know, when you don't have an appropriate space, you know, when your social worker is shoehorned into a space that looks like about the size of a small bathroom, that would be a deficiency.
Well, see, that's actually exactly my question, because while some of these might operate fine in a smaller space, it's not, they have their own space, but I can't quite tell from this, the stage is an obvious one, that's not the ideal location for OT and PT, but where else in here are things that, if you look at them, you say, really, that, that has no business being there, but we needed an open space?
Right, no, okay, for example, the, next to the sprinkler room, adjacent to Classroom 4, in between, is that small room that says tech?
Yep.
I don't even, if you could even see that.
Yep.
That tech room is also used for ELL instruction. It's literally a closet. We have the miscellaneous stor, miscellaneous storage next to the music room. That door is closed off where the music room meets because that storage is a workroom for teachers, but behind there, we, basically, there was a wall put up and a door because that is converted storage space that is used for special education.
Right.
More often than not, it seems that it's the special education rooms that were, were created spaces, spaces that were either former storage rooms, bookrooms, things like that, that are literally larger closets oftentimes. There are some smaller office spaces designated for special education resource. That special education resource, Room 14, is shared between two special ed teachers, and I can tell you literally, when you put two desks in there, teacher desks, there's barely enough room for a table for children. The, and, and, you know, I, we're blessed to have three newer portables, but the bottom line is, they're portables that are outside, and, you know, I will be, with five portables, I will tell you honestly, that those students really feel disconnected from the school. And it isn't, it's not a comforting issue for me, for safety reasons, you know, constantly going back and forth, students having passes. I know Sal's not all that appreciative of that, but I would say, to answer your question, primarily, special education-related services, the portables, those would be the areas where we've had to compromise.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board before I go, Mr. to Mr. Convetito? Anything else from other board members? Not Mr. Convetito.
Not really a question, but more of a comment to follow up on Ms. Carnell's comments. It may make things a little bit clearer. If you look at the Roger Sherman schematic, and you see that front office addition, okay, which we completed, what, three years ago now? Okay? That, which includes the reading offices, the nurses' offices, special ed, that block there is essentially what is missing in Holland Hill, other than the classroom space that you need, okay? And that block was done to free up, because we, at the time, at Sherman, had special ed in classrooms, and math specialists, and divided up and so forth. By adding that block to the front, what we did was free up the classroom space, okay, and use smaller spaces as appropriate, okay? So, you know, I'm not professing the future, but if you, if, you know, I would imagine we would do some type of thing to both of these schools, and then add whatever classroom is needed, but
And these are both done to the same scale.
Right, but to free up those spaces, like, if you look at the, the classroom at Holland Hill with the four specialists in it, that's essentially four offices that would, and, and what it also did was allow for a little bit more central control, because they're all by the central office, okay? And there was an additional conference room built into that as well, but I would imagine that that type of block would need to be added to both of these schools, and then classroom space is appropriate, after you free up that space with that, that type of smaller segmentation, if that makes things clear.
Thank you.
Other conversation from the board. Okay. The, the, Mr. Fattabene won't appreciate this comment, but I need to ask the board to give some direction to the staff. Our last-approved plan was Holland Hill first, Mill Hill second. At our last conversation on this, there seemed to be five board members that were interested in staying the course with that original recommendation, but there were four board members that did not. Has this discussion changed that general direction that Dr. Tittle thought he had from a couple of three months ago? Any board members want to comment on that question? Mrs. Gerber.
Well, I, I think one thing, I know we mentioned this at one of our earlier meetings discussing facilities, is I think it would be very helpful if any board members who wished could get tours of Mill Hill and Holland Hill, just to get a sense, because I think it's one thing to look at on paper, it's another thing to actually see what these spaces are being used for, to really understand, you know, the limitations that are being placed on the students and the faculty at the schools. So I, I just think that that's something that, you know, would be very helpful in making any kind of a decision. It may confuse things, actually, in some ways, because you might not want to choose between the two. I know I've been to both, and they both are operating under very difficult circumstances, but I, I would strongly suggest that we have board members be able to see where, what the schools look like, to, to understand that, so I don't know how that would be facilitated, but
Well, anybody who would like to, to do that, if you can just get in touch with myself or Meg Brown, we'll set it up for you to visit the school, whenever you'd like. And we'll just make sure the principal's available, and just that, if it's as informal as possible, if we keep it to, you know, no more than two or three board members at a time, we don't want to create a meeting for this, so I think we'll just leave it as an open invitation. Some of you may be familiar with the schools, because you've had children go to them, and you may just want to visit one of them, but we're certainly open to that at any time.
Okay, so I encourage board members to do that. Shall we move on to new business item B, approval of Mill Hill roof project as complete? And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education, what? Oh, I'm sorry, no, Paul, I didn't see your hand go up. Did you want to make a comment? Please do.
All I'm going to say that I think visiting the schools is necessary before any decision is made, and I would advocate doing that, and I've, the chair moved on, it wasn't looking for a
I didn't see your hand go up.
Well, I was just going to mention that, but it was unnecessary because you already had moved on, and we're, we're open to those visits.
Yes.
Right, I would, right, all right.
You support Mrs. Gerber's suggestion, right?
I think it's a very good one, I think it's one we should, okay. Such cooperation.
Okay, so on to item 6B, approval of the Mill Hill roof project. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education accept the Mill Hill roof project, number TMP 051, PZBV, as a complete. Mrs. Ms. Carnell, do you wish to make that motion, since?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli. Discussion on the Mill Hill roof project as complete. Mr. Cullen, do you need to make any comments?
No, except that it was one of an excellent project that we ran and came in under budget.
Right, and it's done. And this is a step that, that's necessary for the town, for us to apply on the town's behalf for the state reimbursement.
Mr. Convetito.
No issues with it, especially with this weather, no leaks, no icing problems, no backups, no?
Nope. None at all.
And we're not going to get hit next year with somebody saying, but this was installed incorrectly?
No, it wasn't, and it's got a 20-year warranty, and we got a solar project we're filing for.
That's going on top of this?
We're going on top of it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on Mill Hill roof? If, Mr. Patton?
Just quickly, Mr. Cullen, ballpark on how much under budget?
The original appropriation was $461,614, and it closed out at $300,300. So savings of $161,614 that didn't have to get bonded.
Reversal rate's about 26%, so we'll get 26% of the 300 back. We won't, the town will. We, the town.
Yes.
So the net on that project is going to be less than $300,000.
And a statement that is frequently made at the RTM and Board of Finance is that while we may be authorized to spend up to a certain amount, once the project is complete, we only bond the amount of the project that is the real expenses, is the phrase that you often hear. If there are no other comments, then all in favor of approving the motion that the Board, oh, that's right, too, this is a voting item. My apologies to the public who waited all night to talk about the
Comment on this.
Mill Hill roof.
The Mill roof is done.
Any question or comments from the public on the Mill Hill roof? Any question, comments from the public on the Mill Hill roof? Okay, back to the board. All in favor that the Board of Education accept the Mill Hill roof project as complete? Raise your hand. It's unanimous, eight to zero. Thank you very much. Approval of the minutes. Approval of minutes for January 20th. We have four minutes here. That the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of January 20th, 2015. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mrs. Maxon Cannelly. Any questions on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, raise your hand.
I'm just trying to remember which one I had before, so.
Not that one.
Okay. So, Mr. Patton, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Confortito, Mr. Fattabean, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, all opposed. Abstain. Mrs. Lou McCormick.
Approval of the minutes of January 28th? Which one, which, which of these minutes, so that Donna knows?
29th.
29th?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll get it there.
Okay. That the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of January 28th, 2015. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Confortito, do I have a second? Mrs. Gerber? Any questions on these sets of minutes? Is that, you're raising for a question, yes?
Yes. On page three, and I would especially like to point this out, because for the public and the board, that this question was asked and answered. In the middle of the page, on page three, just to correct the wording of it, it says, "Mrs. Maxon Cannelly asked whether these funds addressed the impact of allergies and was told no." The question actually was whether these funds addressed the impact of the allergy policy implementation and was told no.
So you'd like to have the words "policy implementation" added?
Yes.
After the word allergies?
The allergy.
Allergy policy implementation.
I wrote it down.
Yep.
Yeah.
As amended.
Okay, so we will approve these minutes as amended. Do all board members see where the changes are going to be made? Allergy, allergy policy.
Implementation.
Implementation. Yeah, it would read, "Asked whether these funds address the impact of the allergy policy implementation and was told no." That would be that line. That's how it will read now.
Any questions from board members on what we're voting for?
Actually, I apologize. If I may through the chair, ask Mrs. Leonardi a question, because I know the question I directed to, and now I'm reading this. Correct me if I'm wrong, if you can remember, wasn't the question about whether these funds would be greatly impacted?
The question was about whether or not.
Please come.
Your minute's very important.
Well, this is considering the topic that came up earlier during our policy discussion.
Please respond to the question.
As I recollect, the, the question was about any cost implications as a result of implementing the policy as written.
May I make a suggestion through the chair that I would, we withdraw the motion and just get clarification for the next meeting?
And I'm fine with that.
Just give it a tape.
Of two computers, none were working with Adobe, so I could not watch Fair TV to get this more clear.
So shall we move this on to the next regular meeting?
If, if that would be okay, then I would prefer that.
Who made the motion?
I withdrew the motion.
Okay. Is the board supportive of, by unanimous consent to withdraw the motion? I see nobody objecting. This will be on the next regular meeting. Move on to item C. That the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January 29th, 2015. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mr. Patton. Any questions on this? This is the one at which you'll be abstaining, Ms. Carnell. Any questions on this set of minutes? Seeing none, all in favor of these minutes, please raise your hand. Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Confortito, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, all opposed. Mr. Fattabean, abstentions. Mrs. Lou McCormick and Ms. Carnell. Those motion, those minutes are approved. The last set of minutes is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of February 10th. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mrs. Maxon Cannelly. Do I have any questions or comments on these set of minutes? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of February 10th, please raise your hand. Mr. Patton, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Confortito, Mr. Fattabean, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, opposed? You raised your hand in favor?
Yeah.
In favor? Okay, so.
She wasn't there.
You're, that's an abstention, right? Yeah. Thank you very much. Superintendent's report.
Hey, I have a couple of quick things after Ms. Leonardi. We already have, give you a brief update on the rollout of the online incident reporting platform. We'll do a little more present, a little more formal presentation at a later meeting, but I wanted her to give you an update on it, because a lot of work has gone into it, so we wanted to give you an update.
Enclosure number nine really gave you some information about where we are currently in the rollout. Just a quick update, we will go live with the platform, meaning the platform button, as I call it, will be available on the district website and all of each school's website prominently displayed on March 16th. I will do a rollout presentation to the board on March 10th, that will hopefully also introduce it to the community at large through Fair TV. Schools will be presenting to, each school is charged with introducing it to their families, introducing it to their students, introducing it to their faculty. We've decided that we're going to introduce it to students directly in grades four and five, but use the parents, because we, the elementary principals and I talked a lot about, at the elementary level, most of the kids will go through their families. But so that's our first decision, and we'll see how that rolls out. So grades four and five students will be introduced individually to the, to the button or to the, the online reporting system. Just for your edification, TIPS is, what TIPS signifies is Threat Assessment, Incident Management, and Prevention Service. So that's what TIPS stands for. And I'm here for any questions you might have at this point, knowing that I'll be presenting more fully to you on March 10th.
Questions immediately. Mark, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly?
Just one quick question. When you say that all schools will introduce this platform to PTAs prior to March 16th, my only question with that is that, that's a very short window. I mean, there could be PTAs that aren't even meeting.
There are.
Up until then. And so I was curious why, if that, why is that so hard and fast, since that might be impossible for some?
There are some that will meet at, at a meeting afterwards, but it will go out through the PTA blast. There's written documentation that will go out, so that all, everyone gets the same talking points. That's all been created by me. So they'll get a common set of talking points. Some will get it in writing, and then a follow-up at their next PTA meeting. Some will get it earlier at a live meeting, but they'll also get the written documentation. Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Fattabean?
He looks so happy about this. I, just a query. This online incident report platform, is that a software program?
It's a, it's not software. This is a platform that we have purchased, so it goes through a third-party vendor.
Could you explain that a little better to me?
It's a web-based platform, so it doesn't run through Fairfield servers at all. It runs through the server of the company we've hired.
But it's a software-based platform. It just runs on someone else's server?
It's a web-based plas- platform, yes.
Web-based platform. And it's a, it's a, do you know other districts using this same platform?
I don't know of any using it in Connecticut, but you could go on now and see it on the Tulsa-Oklahoma public schools. I can get you a list of other districts, large districts around the country that are using it. It's a middlewestern-based company.
Okay. Do you know any other platforms used within the state of Connecticut for this particular purpose?
Yes. The district climate team looked at and assessed a number of different platforms. This was, other than making, creating one our own that would have been free, this is the one that was the, we thought met most of our standards and had, was the least expensive.
And can you summarize very quickly with just a couple of sentences what you liked about this program versus the other ones that were assessed?
Well, this one allowed for both anonymous and discreet reporting. This one has the, the back end of the reporting allows for good documentation capabilities. So it's not just that we get a report, but once we get a report and begin an investigation, it allows us to track.
That's it.
The timeliness in the investigation. It also allows us to monitor and cull together data about the number of reports in, under each type of incident, where they're happening, times of the day, locations of the building. So it gives us some opportunity to hopefully address issues that might be trending upward, or might be an issue at a school, or an issue at a district level.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Confortito?
Just want to clarify, this is the same platform that you announced to us back in January?
Yes.
That was approved. Okay.
Thanks, Andrea.
That was a succinct answer. Okay. Dr. Tidal, do you have anything else on the superintendent's report?
Just a couple of quick updates. The capital non-recurring project has been working its way through the labyrinth process of town approval. It was almost there at the Board of Finance, and then a question came up about how long some of the items should be bonded, particularly the security items. And it was, at that point, told to the Board of Finance by the Bond Council that they could not change those bond resolutions in terms of how long they're bonded for, which came as a surprise to the members of the Board of Finance. So, for that reason, for that reason alone, there's a special meeting of the Board of Finance tomorrow at 5:00. The first, and, and the only item on the agenda is to have a, initially, a private executive session to sort out which of the security items should go into which, five years, 15 years, or 20 years. Then they'll come out, then they'll vote the bond resolutions, and then that will go back to the Board of Finance at the March 3rd meeting. Now, the March.
RTM?
No, the Board of Finance has to hit it again. So the Board of Finance, their March 3rd meeting is the first of their budget meetings. However, they're gonna kind of make an exception to pass through and get the, keep the ball rolling, so that these can get to the RTM for March. Otherwise, we'd have to wait another month on all of it, and all the capital non-recurring are being held up by this, the towns and ours. And the Board of Finance did vote, and the Board of Selectmen then did vote to include the Jennings boilers in there. So the Jennings boilers are in, and they'll be in the resolution, but the hangup was the length of time they wanted to bond the security for, and that should be moving forward. So March 3rd should be the night we get past Board of Finance. Then we'll have the two committee meetings, and then we'll have the RTM meeting in March. So March is shaping up to be a busy month. So I just wanted to let you know where that stands. So it, it looks like good news. It's just, there've been a lot of discussions of the town bodies about what can the town bodies do? You know, the RTM wanted to add for the Osborne Hill walkway, and the Bond Council said, "Well, we're not sure you can do that. I gotta think about it." So that got to bird. But they did pass the resolution on the, on the necessary money to complete the gym there. So there's been a lot of discussion about what the authority is of the different bodies in terms of adding or subtracting. So we're sort of caught up in that, in that vise, but I think that's gonna happen. The other thing is, I should point out that just recently, as, as late as last week, because this was brought up by one of the students, and I want you to know we're attentive to it, we spent, we've spent so far this year, Tom, what, $35,000 just trucking away snow out of parking lots that's been piled up. And most recently, the, both the Ludlow campuses, as well as, I think, Burr, had huge piles of snow removed to free up the parking spaces, to make the driving more visible. And so we are attentive to that issue. It's very expensive. It took two dump trucks, 10 payloaders, 10 hours to move this stuff out of the, out of the parking lot. So these storms have really cost us in that regard, but I just wanted to bring people up to speed, that we have been deadening a lot of resources, not just aplowing the schools, but in some cases, because it got to be so high, actually paying a company to truck it away to a disposal site, so that we could improve the safety at the schools. I just didn't want people to get the impression we weren't paying attention to that issue.
Any questions of the superintendent on those two items? Mr. Patton?
Through the chair to Dr. Tidal. On, so, according to what you just said, trucking away the snow, so is that in the Board of Ed side, or is that in the Town Public Works side?
Us.
Just out of curiosity, why is that? Because they've done what they are required to do, and this is over and beyond?
We pay our own snow removal costs.
Completely?
For. Correct. For the schools.
For the schools.
School parking lots. We have a contractor. All right, Tom, you want to explain? I mean, the town does the roads. The town does a lot.
I, I didn't remember that.
Okay, but, but we're on the hook for our own facilities.
Gotcha.
But you have the answer to the question?
I do.
You do. Thank you, Mr. Cullen.
Yes. We own it. It's a budget we routinely overexpend, and there's more money in next year's budget for it as a result.
Any other questions of Dr. Tidal on the two subjects that he brought up? If not, committee and liaison reports. Any committee or liaison report? Mrs. Gerber?
Well, as Dr. Tidal stated, the Osborne Hill request for the contingency money, the $340,000, was approved by the RTM last night. And the only outstanding issue is the attached walkway, which I guess will be going to the RTM in March, correct? Or I was a little unclear.
That's unclear what the timeline is.
Right, okay, I wasn't sure.
I think it, I think it depends on what the ruling is of the town, not the town attorney, of the Bond Council.
Right.
Because the Bond Council could rule that the RTM has the authority to increase that bond resolution.
Yes.
Which means they could take it up at their March meeting. Should he rule that it has to go all the way back through the town bodies, I would hi, find it highly unlikely that it makes the March RTM meeting.
Correct. Okay, thank you. And then the other, with Ludlow, the Ludlow Building Committee Chair is planning on going to the Board of Selectmen in March to make a presentation in terms of a possible funding request. It's still up in the air. They will be meeting, I believe, before the, the Board of Selectmen meeting, so there should be a better sense of what amount they're looking at. But, so that'll be something I'll keep everyone apprised of.
Any other committee or liaison reports? Mr. Patton?
The February SEPTA meeting had a really great guest speaker from the financial industry, but it was a gentleman who specialized in financial planning and whatnot for special needs, or families with special needs children. And he gave pretty much the whole meeting, a presentation on anything from long-term planning and finances, to creating 529 funds, to long-term care and wills. And it was very comprehensive, and I was very impressed. I, I love seeing different things, like apparently the, the members who were at the meeting were, were also, you know, gunning, or not gunning, but they were, they were asking for this type of thing to be done for, for a while, and after, I think, a couple of years. And so anybody who wants more information on that sort of thing, please contact the SEPTA PTA president. And the other SEPTA information was Monday, March 2nd, go to Chips, the, our favorite pancake house in, in Fairfield here, for dinner. And it's like a lot of other charity events that Chips does. They, you know, $10 gets you, you know, a whole, basically, breakfast for dinner kind of thing, and it's all a fundraiser that goes directly to Fairfield SEPTA.
Any other? Hearing none? Open, open board comment? I'll start over here again. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly?
I just want to speak, and I know Mr. Patton and Mr. Dwyer were there as well, but we just went to the a cappella concert at Tomlinson this past Friday. And while it was not only an absolutely amazing assembly of student talent, you can't help but realize that, it's no surprise to any of us that our students are talented, but what a tremendous job by the staff to have pulled together those pieces of art that the students performed. I mean, it's one of the concerts of the year, and I'm not saying I haven't enjoyed, down to fourth-grade strings, all the concerts I've been to, but it's truly one of those concerts that when your child finishes performing, you have no desire to get up and go, because each performance after the other was just amazing. So, you know, just a quick shout out to the staff, that they just did a wonderful job there.
Thank you. Mr. Pat Fattabean? And, Mr. Confortito? Mrs. Lou McCormick?
I would like to just raise this, this concept. I know that we have a very formal schedule of addressing different curriculum at different points in time. And up this year is world languages, of course, I think many of us feel is very important. And I know that the curriculum discussions will be taking, place this week. So to the extent that people can join and listen to that, I would, I would encourage that on the board, because I think this is a very important topic. that on the board, because I think this is a very important topic. But secondly, I would like to also say that, to the extent that the district or anyone, any of the administrators finds that there is a shortfall in resources, including textbooks and such, I would like to note that I would be fully supportive of hearing from those people and staff that, in fact, we need to accelerate consideration of resources at the board table, and that we don't always have to wait for four years to go by before we review the need to update something or revise, whether it be curriculum, or textbooks, or resources, or synthetic textbooks, if that should be the need. Because I, I do worry that we get so stuck in our schedules, because we create these policies, that we stick to them so rigidly, and as we say, we don't want them to be too rigid. And I do want it to be known that, at least for myself, I can't speak for the board, but I would be interested in, in considering accelerating these different topics, because I feel that when we don't have the right resources, or if we need to realign something within the curriculum, we should approach it with urgency, because every year that we lose by not readdressing or updating either our science or our social studies or what have you, just because it's not up for another two years, I think is a shame. And so, I would very much like this board to be open to the concept of, if we find something that needs to be addressed more urgently, that we should be willing to go out of line and update textbooks, update curriculum, and review them more frequently than once every four years.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, anything? Ms. Carnell? Mrs. Gerber? Three comments. One, you, you received, I think through the email, that the arbitration award has, was sent to us. For, for the arbitration award has been received for the FSAA contract. It supported the administrator's contract, Last Best Offer, which, for our purposes, was the agreed-upon health plan. So, so we lost the arbitration, but we ended up where we originally had hoped to in terms of our approval of the contract. I put at your desk this little handy tips for effective lobbying, which Cabe sent to me and asked me to give to you, so you have it. And for the purposes of the public, I remind you that this Saturday, February 28th, we will have a board discussion here in this building at 9:30, for the purpose of discussing programs, finances, and facilities, which means that just about every subject other than personnel is available for Q and A with the board members. With that, motion for the adjournment? Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, all in favor? Raise your hand. It is unanimous. Thank you very much.